Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We'll call the meeting of Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
It has, sir.
I know we got Facebook as I witnessed, but Mr. Parker will be coming on. Thank you all for coming. There's this meeting of the county commissioners. This will be our last meeting unless there's something special that has to come up for 2020. As has been said prior to this meeting, it's been an interesting year. I'm just use the word interesting. But I always also want to say, we made it. We made it through and we're still making it. So thank you for your contributions to. This is Liberty County that we can be productive and we can be optimistic at this point, too. We're gonna impose, there's a young man in the audience who is retiring very soon. His name is Elder Larry Logan. I'm gonna use his other title, Elder Larry Logan, as he will come and lead us in our invocation, followed by a pledge. He's been with us how many years, sir? Ten years. He's served us very well and you'll be greatly missed. And thank you so much for your service to. I said in the email to country and the county. We appreciate that, sir. If we all stand now for our invocation.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Logan has also prepared our bereavements, as they do, for those employees who have passed away. Former employees that have passed away. If we could recognize those names and maybe before the prayer.
Before the prayer.
Okay. We had four employees, former employees unfortunately, that passed away. Haven't done the math on all these years of service, but we can do it in our minds as we go. Mr. Howard Freeman. Howard served here from 96 to 2011, 14 years. Dave Sapp, who a lot of folks know that ran the side of waste. He was employed from 1987 until 2010. Mr. Willie Jones, who worked at the road department from 1981 to 2002. And Ms. Donna Davis, who worked from 87 to 2013. She had 26 years of service with the county. The others had 21 and 19 respectively. So quite a long number of tenure there for dedication.
All those persons for their service and their life.
Yes. At the beginning of our prayer, let us pause this for a moment to remember those fallen comrades. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this opportunity for us to come together to do the business of the county. Praying, God, that you would bless each and every one. We pray for those that are new coming and we pray for those that are outgoing. Pray for Commissioner Bowman, that you would bless him in a special, special way, God, for the service he's given to the community. We also pray for Commissioner Jones was coming in. You would bless him, God, with the guidance and leadership, oh God, to give to this county. Lord, a special prayer at this last meeting of the year, we pray that you would, oh God, continue to give us the guidance and the leadership that we need to be successful and to be prosperous into the new year that's coming in. Help us, oh God, to submit ourselves and our guidance to you and then to our fellow citizens of this community. We ask your blessings upon this body and the people that are here. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I heard him.
Mr. Chairman, there's one other, I think, announcement. Logan will hang around just a second. We will roast him at some point.
Let's do it now.
He is an easy roast target. We found that out. We've had the occasion to stay in the EOC several times and he has done a great job. We did find that. We have a lot in common. I won't go into all that, Larry, after the story. But we will, but he's been just a dedicated servant to the county and my hat's all publicly. The other thing is that we went through a selection process to try to find somebody to fill those shoes. And that gentleman's in this room also. Ask him to come up at this time. Y'all know him.
We know him. He's Bob Dodd.
He has worked through several disasters with us. I think he came over the time actually when Samantha came on or somewhere around that time and they jumped right into two hurricanes that year. So he's performed very well, Mr. Robert Dodd, and we're happy to announce as administration today that he was selected for that role. He'll take that effect in January 1st and he'll be there to serve us and we'll be advertising.
Thank you. I just want to be very brief because I've been instructed to be brief by those that are around me. Briefly, I just want to mention, Commissioner Thierf mentioned something that really got me and that was, this is the first year that I've missed a Christmas parade. Nine years, the 10 years I've been here, every year at one point I had been involved in a parade some way, shape or form, mostly for driving, but involved. And so I want to thank everybody. Now, I'd like to start with Mr. Hodges, who did my interview when I first got here. He did the interview and there was several people that was applying for the job and I thank him for allowing me to give it the opportunity. Because when I first came, remember this job was a part-time position. And I want to thank him for giving me the opportunity to work part-time and then actually eventually move into a full-time position. So as a deputy director and then eventually as a director. So I want to thank him. I also want to thank, you know, for the confidence, even though we have a lot in common and some things we do. Yeah, so I just want to thank all the people that are involved with this, including our county manager, Mr. Yeah, Mr. Brown. Got him, huh? And the chairman and all the commissioners, I want to thank each and every one of you for giving me the opportunity to serve. This has been actually the most rewarding experience in all the, even my military career and here. Rewarding experience to serve the people of Liberty County and to help people from all faiths of this community come to me and say, "Thank you for serving and thank you for being here for us in during those times of disasters." And I want to thank the commission for giving me that opportunity and I could never, ever repay. Money was not an important thing. The most important thing was an opportunity to serve the people of this county. Having said that, I yield to my successor and to the man that's going to take EMA to the next level, Mr. Robert Dodd. Mr. Chairman, the commissioners, Mr. Brown, Mr. Mosley, hey, thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to it. I know I have some big shoes to fill, but I'm looking forward to the challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good to have you. Good to have you.
This happens to all?
Yes, sir. I'm online, so I just.
Commissioner Walden was.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I hope Larry has a good retirement. If he finds himself with nothing to do, he can always come back up there and volunteer. Yeah, well, I enjoyed my time working with him when I worked with Georgia Power and he was an asset, so. Have a good time, Larry.
Thank you, sir.
Tonight, we also would like to make mention that this will be Commissioner Bowen's last meeting as a commissioner. Elected commissioner, but he'll always have the position he wants to serve. We've enjoyed working with him. I told him earlier, all these years, he's been very passionate about serving his district. And now he's going to transition, but we certainly want to appreciate him publicly for his service to Liberty County. Those persons that live in that district could rest assured that if they called him, he would respond, so. And we appreciate that and we appreciate the camaraderie we had over these years working with him. He's been very supportive. And no doubt about it, he has the people at heart as well as the county. So Commissioner Bowen, thank you for your service. Can we give him a round of applause, please, for his service? Now, sir, if you'd like to greet us in your own way, you have.
Well, this won't take long, but. No, Kim, Joey, I want to thank this whole board. It has been 22 years I've enjoyed working. Mayor Stevens, I worked with him the whole 22 years and he's a, he's a, you couldn't ask for a better person in the first district. He's done that certain job. Everybody on it. My mentor, Gary Gillard, Eddie Walden. Chairman Lovett. You couldn't ask for a better chairman right here. This guy here has been outstanding.
Thank you, sir.
Tony Thrift, Justin.
I'm at the kids' table.
All the employees, Joey Brown, Kim McGlough, Clinton Wells, Trent Long, all of them. Has made this county work and I couldn't do it without the support of everybody. So anyway, yeah, I'm fixing to step down and I was hoping Mr. Jones would be here tonight, but I hope he's, he's, he'll do fine. He'll do fine. So y'all give him the support and he'll be okay. Liberty County, with God's good graces, I couldn't have done it without him. I'm telling you, I might tear up and I don't never cry. You know, really, with his good graces helped me get through these 22 years of believing in him. But thanks, Liberty County, for what you've done for me and the community. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowen. We're gonna give you a key to the county so you can always get in.
Need to keep my card.
All right, department reports. Chris McGlough, finance.
I am gonna miss Commissioner Bowen. He is my district commissioner. So it's been really nice. We haven't always agreed on everything, but we have, we have agreed to disagree a couple of times and kept it moving.
Always had the best entry and interest in what was right.
That's right. That's right. And I truly appreciate our conversations that we've, we are frank and forthright conversations that we've had concerning different things. So truly appreciate that. We just closed the month two days ago, so we do not have your regular monthly report yet. We will come before you twice in January. It's your regular meeting with the November report and then it's your mid-month meeting with the December report. But what I was able to do, at least, together the sales tax report so that you could at least see how the sales tax is going. And it's going fabulous. The month of November was better than the month of October. $939,000 was our November distribution. It is amazing. We are now $876,000 ahead of schedule, so it's looking really, really good.
That don't mean we have to spend that.
No, sir, it does not. But it means it's available to spend on those capital needs that we do have. And I did also update all of your road money. I talked with Trent Long's office today. I got information on where certain projects were so I could make sure that your obligations were accurate and recorded everything that's still outstanding and obligated so that your available balance truly reflects what you have available to spend right now. So we've taken into consideration anything that's already outstanding, your L-MIG matches, current contracts and contracts that are still out there. So I think we're, we're good to go. If anybody has any specific questions on any SPOSS projects, I'd be more than happy to try and answer those.
Mr. Chair, my mic really works.
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question. So you said that $938,000 was for the month of November?
$939,000 is what we received in the month of November, so that actually reflects October sales.
Right, right.
Yes.
And on this SPOSS, how many more years do we have on it?
This, this SPOSS program runs from April 2017 until March 2023.
Okay, that's, okay. So we're, so we're doing good right now?
Yeah, another, another two years and three months.
Right.
We're really doing well.
Good deal. Good deal. That was it for me.
I guess just a little, trying to not belabor the time, but just a little FYI, a little teaching moment. The, based on what you said, Commissioner Bowen, you know, these funds are set aside for the projects that we have in the SPOSS referendum. So we can't spend the money for anything but those parties that are on the.
Right.
But the percentages, because it's based off the percentages, right? So if we collect more, then we have more for those.
Each project is given that percentage on a pro-rata basis, so yes.
Yeah, yeah. So I like the cushion.
I like it.
Now, I want to see what, that's what December holds.
I know.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, all right.
Appreciate it. So we'll see you twice in January for the.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Long.
Remember what I said, Trent.
And keep it short.
Mentioned no numbers.
Not sure how.
Marion, you only have so much.
Yep, so Melvin Lane, they're pretty much finished with that job. Got a little bit of asphalt that I wanted to put on Homestown Loop Road. Sykes Brothers was doing asphalt for them and so what we're gonna do is when they're here doing one of the other projects, let them scoot over and that extra 10 tons of asphalt there. Because that's just, that's about a half a truckload of asphalt they gotta put down. So not trying to make, make a special trip with all that equipment for 10 tons.
Trent, Trent, is, so is that a part of the Melvin Lane project, of what you're doing on Homestown Loop Road? Where T's in?
Yeah, sure. Just where we cut across the road. Just trying to straighten it up a little bit, make it look a little better. And I had, I mean, it was in the contract, so.
Okay, good.
It's not something that you're, it's not extra, no change orders, and we have not de-obligated that much.
It looks good. I talked to Ms. Julia May down there and she says she appreciated the hard work that we did and now she wants me to get her some streetlights, but.
I did not go down the last two. Did Strickland get in there?
I told her in the meantime, just get a dust of dawn light and put it in her yard. Yep, there you go.
That's right.
All right, I'm gonna skip Yeoman's Road to last, since this is a separate item on the agenda and I'm not supposed to say any numbers.
No numbers.
Okay.
I see the numbers.
Third Street, they're wrapping up a few things. The outfall between the houses off of George is being poured, was poured today. So they're making progress to go ahead and finish that job up. They've been out there cleaning up the ditches and fine grading and trying to get that job to look a little bit better than it was. It's starting to look a lot better. So they still gotta give it to go. Yes, sir.
There was one individual that had questions about his driveway going in, something about the pipe. Was it located just right going in his driveway? Just about to the end, just before you get to Jericho on the left. It's probably about three houses back. Oh, the guy's name is Sylvester? No, Alan Sylvester.
Yes, sir.
It's on the left-hand side. Have you been aware of any of this? Because I've noticed, talked to the contractors, but I didn't know if he was aware.
Yes, sir, we, we.
Corrections there. Was there any corrections going to be made right there?
My understanding that the, now I haven't talked to him. I know Andy from my office did talk to him. And I think what we've got in the ground is what we're gonna have. And I think it's, it was in the right position.
Okay.
Where the road, where the driveway was before is where we put it back.
Okay.
And then he likes to do it at an angle and so it's, it's just making him turn at a different angle than he was used to.
Okay. I'm not the engineer. I mean, I went and bought it several times, but I didn't know what he was talking about, actually. But if it's right, it's right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
But I will double check to make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, Andy hadn't been at work this week, so I'll check with him when he gets back next week. So with convenience centers, I know you got some conversations with Culverston tonight about that. It's my Loop Road. We did up some acceptance things we did last month. Those filed and that is all ready to roll. Transfer station tipping floor. We are gonna start that tomorrow. The tipping floor closes at about 12, or around there. We're supposed to turn it over to the contractor in the morning. Then what he'll do is he'll come in shop blasted for curing compound on it Saturday. They'll end up putting the new concrete on top of it. And so it should be turned back over to us first thing Monday morning.
And that's enough time for it to settle and everything?
Yes, the fast curing stuff. You don't, you don't mess around when you put it down because it sets up really, really fast. And they're accustomed to doing these things in the weekend.
All right. I guess it's not, what was that, Commissioner Gillard? The asphalt? Would it be in too cold? So we good with the weather?
Well, yes, sir. We've had conversations about the weather and where we are and keeping it warm. So it's getting down on the low-end side of where I would like to be, but we're still above the critical temperature.
And what is that temperature?
Usually about 40 degrees and rising. And if we have some areas or periods at night that it's colder, it'll be okay, as long as I'm not pouring it when it's 32 degrees. As long as when I'm pouring, it's 40 and rising.
Okay.
Man Oliver Church Road, contractor on that Sykes Brothers. Contracts, the contract documents were prepared. We're waiting to get them back from the bonding company. Once we have those done, we'll bring them back over to the chairman to sign. We should have those any day now. Pioneer Road, that is bidding out on January 15th. That's in the paper now. Have some interest in it, but, and hadn't had very many questions about it, so which is a good thing. Joe DeLaine, D Road, Todd Road, prepared some estimates for commitment. We'll have to look at those roads. Jones Creek Recreation Facility, we did a plan for Jimmy and just kind of did a little bit of work on that, trying to get that thing where we can do something out there if you guys are ready. Stormwater MPD, yes. Now, we're gonna have to do some work on our, some of our ordinance. And we're probably gonna have to adopt a post-construction ordinance, which is another thing that the state is kind of trickling down to us. You know, over the years, we've done a lot of work with our ordinances as far as erosion sediment control. We've got illicit discharge. Action elimination. We've got our stormwater. We've got several different things in our ordinances that all address stormwater. One of the things we've talked about as part of the Hapo or Council Technical Committee is bringing something to the Board of Commissioners and to several of the municipalities in the county to consolidate and organize our ordinances regarding stormwater into a single chapter. Instead of some of them being in building inspection, some being in a chapter by themselves and just being scattered about. Try to put them all together. So we'll be bringing some of that back to you in the near future for you to start looking at it. It's not something we gotta take action on. It's something that we're working on to bring to you for your consideration. So that way, when you start hearing about it, you know we're working on it as we go along. We have some ADA improvements we're making. A lot of, we got a lot of the surveying done for that and we're trying to get the plans up and running so we can get those out for bids here pretty shortly. Did a little bit of relay out for the Gil Park site for Jimmy this month and kind of looked at it. So the last thing that I have is Yeoman's Road roadway improvements. We took bids on the Yeoman's Road and they were much less expensive than what our budget was. They had some asphalt that was, we had some excellent prices on the asphalt. And not just from Sykes Brothers, but across the board. And we had good prices on this project all the way across. We went back and we checked their prices, make sure that, you know, they weren't loading up one area and had missing. And then we went back and we double-checked all of our quantities to make sure that we all had the right quantities, that there just wasn't something missed. And we feel comfortable with our quantities. They feel comfortable with their prices. So what we would like to be able to do is recommend to the Board of Commissioners to enter into a contract with Sykes Brothers Incorporated with a price of $632,881 even, with a 10% contingency. That way we can get that project underway.
I know, like you just said, when we first, when you first put it up for bid, we were looking at nine, nine twenty-one, nine thirty-one. What did you say was the reason that?
Well, now, nine thirty-one includes our engineering fees and things like that in it. And when you back that out, you're around $800,000 construction. So we're about $170,000 less than what our construction budget was, so. And I know I'm approximating with those numbers, but yes, sir, a lot of it was in the asphalt. We budgeted $105 a ton for the asphalt and they came in at $85.50 a ton. And, you know, so that, and they're some 150 tons. So that's a lot of money.
How long you think this price is gonna be good for, on that asphalt? Think it's gonna stay that way for a while?
Yes, sir. They have to hold it for the life of the contract.
No, I think he's, you're talking about additional projects as well.
Oh, yes, sir.
Talking about.
Well, just a couple of weeks ago, we had gotten some prices that were in the upper 90s. This one was in the mid-80s, mid-80s. And so we're seeing a little bit of a jump here and there. I don't expect it, I don't expect to see it this low very often. And honestly, I don't expect to see this, this low when we get Pioneer Road in. I'll be, if we get it this low when we get some of these in, I'll be tickle pink. But I'm just, I don't expect this.
So we need to move on this.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Long, was that, it's one mile of a dirt road? Is that right?
His is. His is .65 miles.
Point, okay.
.65.
About a half a mile, a little over half.
Just a little over half.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. For 630. Was there a contingency? Did you say?
10%.
10% of the 632?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
So it's not included in there?
No, not in the, not in the.
Not in the bid? Okay.
Yeah, that's not in their price.
Okay, gotcha.
That's, that's for us to budget. As Kim is obligating money, we obligate the contract for 10% that way. We have fluctuation if we find things we don't know about. But we're pretty decent about trying not to get into that very much.
We have been pretty successful. Commissioner Walden, I think, is trying to make a comment.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Walden.
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to ask a question and of course, I'll probably have to defer to Commissioner Thrift about this. Is with the new, and Joey, you may have followed up on it, the new house bill five or 244, with this broadband going in on the EMC areas. Are we gonna be planning for anything on that end or do we have broadband on that end of the coast, Commissioner Stevens? Do we need to end this contract, get with coastal EMC, either there or Pioneer Road? I know that's all underground in that area, which will require boring later on. And I just want to make sure that after we've got a brand-new road down and things are done, that we don't wind up having to bore back underneath the road and cause more construction in that area. So let's make sure that when we do have the meetings with these contractors, that, you know, these other utilities are showing up. Because that's gonna be on, on our right-of-way in a lot of areas, which is, you know, the rural areas and a lot of the co-ops have it. So I don't, I don't want us to get the cart in front of the horse on some of this stuff. It's just my opinion on it and that's, that's it. I know that after the road is in, if you've got to bore in an underground area, you've got costs. You've got the probability of having to get somebody out there to locate. So, I mean, we can locate some of our culverts, but there'll be a lot of things that, you know, we, we take for granted. So let's, let's just err on the side of it. So I'll add into that, but, that's it.
We will, sir. And I don't, I'm yielding my IT guy in the back. I think I know the answer because we're trying to get broadband to the new fire station on the island side. There's not broadband down that far. And so we'll, we'll work to dig into the broadband schedule to see where they are, if they can, where, if they are, where they can talk about. And so, we'll, we'll work to dig into the broadband schedule to see where they are, if they can, where, if they are where they can talk about setbacks or whatever may be needed on that. That'd be great.
We can go ahead and.
Well, when we put, when we do that, when we do start with infrastructure, and I'm, I heard you talk about the contractor. If somebody needs to have that conduit in, then we need to be communicating with those utility providers. Uh, I know a lot of times Trent and I have talked, they don't show up. And we need them to show up from now on, uh, whoever it is, so.
That's, that's a good point.
Be very aggravating at the end, especially, I mean, I know Commissioner Thrift can get somebody out there, but when you start around the county and, you know, Mr. Gilligan brought up a good point, somewhere down the road and not the too distant future that if we're, you know, we got these utilities on our right-of-way and, you know, we can qualify for some, some, uh, money to, to light these areas, um, you know.
We'll follow up, yes, sir. We'll, we'll be sure to follow up.
You looking at it?
Yes, sir. Um, and I'll be glad to go ahead and talk to the contractor about going ahead and getting some extra conduits across the road as we go down. That way, we are pre-positioned with conduits later on. Um, also do want to let you know that, um, we had a conversation with the engineer from Century Link, which was one of our problems with, uh, Melvin Lane and put them on notice by email and by verbal conversation that we had let a contract on Yeoman's Road. We had given them a set of plans on Yeoman's Road six months ago. Hadn't heard anything back from them. Put them on notice that we would be doing something the first part of the year, and they needed to be ready to move whatever they needed to do. So, trying to let them know and give them as much warning as we can.
What happens if they don't come forth? Where, where, where do they?
The way this one is designed, I'm not expecting as many issues as we had with Melvin Lane. One of the issues we had with Melvin Lane is the line was down the, you know, there was no right-of-way there before. Road was a dirt road, and that telephone line was just down the middle of the road, and it was not that deep. When I say not that deep for Commissioner Walden, I'm talking twelve inches deep. And when we graded, graded the road, then it was exposed, so we couldn't do anything with leaving it in place. With Yeoman's Road, I'm following the existing grade fairly well. Um, some of the stuff I'm doing with curb and gutter on the right side of the road, we got some longitudinal pipe that we should be able to miss it, so. I'm not expecting nearly as many conflicts with them. And we did have some, uh, utility locations done before we did our design that picked up some of it, and if that holds true, we should be okay.
Okay.
All right. All right, Commissioner Stevens.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we enter into a contract with Sykes Brothers for the amount of six thirty-two, eight-eight-one for the paving of, uh, Yeoman's Road.
Second to that.
Second.
In a second, that we finally approve this good bid, six thirty-two, eight-eight-one for Yeoman's Road. Any further discussion?
I, I just have a question. And, and I know in the, in the past, we would discuss about, uh, our road projects and the, uh, with the NWB E policy and, and how that doesn't really affects this. But, I mean, and, and I know Sykes Brothers, they do a phenomenal job. They, they do get a, a lot of our, our work, uh, our construction work. But what is their, their, their policy? I understand that we have a policy in place, but, I mean, are, are they still trying to attempt to, to hire subcontractors?
They do, to some extent. They don't keep a record of it, um, for this particular jobs. They don't have to turn it in. Um, but there are a lot of times where they're hiring truck drivers and, um, the minority contractors that do a lot of that. Uh, like the asphalt, uh, they'll be doing, uh, asphalt and stone, they'll be self-performing. Uh, grading, they'll be self-performing. Um, drainage pipe, they haven't told me who their sub is on there, but I have an idea, but it won't be a minority contractor, but, but for some of the suppliers and things like that, they will be.
Well, uh, in, in the, uh, future, Trent, can, can you, I mean, and I'm not speaking for the whole commission, but just for me, uh, even that they don't have to, but is, is there any information that you could get to me about their subcontractors and, and their, their hiring process with that?
I'm glad to get it. I'll get whatever they're ruling off for me.
Right, right, absolutely. All right.
Okay.
Hold a favor of the bitch in motion. Raise your hand, please. All right. It's approved.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your money.
You don't need my money. You don't need my money. Hey, Mr. Chairman, I was gonna say that.
I see the man.
Hey, you see the difference?
Hey, I, I have one question for Trent.
Yes, sir.
Trent, on your, uh, next month report, if you can add a line item, um, and maybe name it something like Walthaville Road Acceptance, so that at least we'll know that we, we working toward that. I know that, uh, I talked with Larry, you know, I talked with you, and we, we've doing some things, but, um, I'd just like for it to be on, on your report so that, um, when you're going by these, um, these, the subject matter, we, we, we can, we can discuss it. So, I mean, and you don't have to name it Walthaville Road Acceptance, uh, per se, but if you, um, if we can discuss it, um, at the meetings. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And, uh, Commissioner Stevens.
Yes.
This Yeoman's Road has been a, a topic for a long time. Uh, once you get it paved, is there any chance it could be moved over to my district?
No, but I'm coming over and getting Melvin Lane.
I'll bet you would, I'll bet you would.
Thank you, Mr. Long. All right. Road Department, Mr. Wells, sweep to the schedule. Good evening.
I've been talking with some of the commissioners, Mr. Brown, and there was some questions on the street sweeping. I sent y'all the December schedule. Um, that's how we keep up with what roads we, we do sweep when we do. We're getting back on that schedule. We've been off of it for a little while. I can go ahead and tell you. Had a little trouble with the street sweeping, all that good stuff, but.
What are you up here for? What are you here for?
He's on the agenda.
Questions about the street sweeping.
Came for that last meeting.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gilligan did.
I, I, I did. Yeah, um, thanks. Um, and, you know, Joey and I did talk with, about it, and I think when, um, Eddie and I wrote out and the sweep was out that day. But I, you know, it was, it was just, it was just my point that, um, we have this dirt road inventory, and over time, we, which is a maintenance, um, component for dirt road, and when, um, when we pave it, then the maintenance component would be sweeping, and of course, more in the right-of-ways. And, um, you know, I was just wondering about the street sweeping schedule, and Joey said he would get with you, and, um, I do see the streets, um, the two particular that, uh, well, uh, the three that I, that I've paved. I think one of them is in Commissioner Stevens' district now. But, um, Spencer Gall and Turning Point and Melvin Lane, they are on your schedule, and I, and I do appreciate that.
Yeah, and, and, and you seen them. We've, we've had trouble with the sweeper a little bit here lately, but I hopefully I've got it resolved. They just, we've had some issues with it.
Most of the roads you sweep have curb in them, right?
Yeah, yeah, just the roads with the curb, curb and gutter.
Need to get a Timco instead of a Elgin.
I talked to them today, and they shot me a number that scared me to death.
But, but it's, it's worth it. We got three of them.
Yeah. Yeah, we've got to do something. We, we bought, that's a oh-seven model sweeper and just rebuilt the pickup head, and it does not pick up pine shrom leaves good at all.
But, you, you know, the, um, again, we, we're, we're talking about paving roads, and, you know, if, if we pave them and we put the roll-up curve, you know, the, the maintenance, the maintenance, the grading goes away, but the maintenance don't go away.
There's still maintenance on it regardless.
Right, right, okay. But I appreciate that.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. And I, and I personally want to thank Commissioner Bowen and myself, uh, Ben Whittington.
I might call you three times today.
I talked to you one time. And, and I'm not gonna be like.
Now, you were so nice earlier.
A lot of the conversations I had wasn't all that nice.
Thank you. I'm messing with you.
Hey, Ted, Ted, I'm not gonna, that day when me and Eddie went down there, I'm not gonna tell you what he said, but he.
Don't stop now.
It was something like, it was something like, I can't wait for twenty twenty. And I thought he was talking about the COVID.
Y'all entertainment for our Facebook people.
Well, it's been a pleasure. I can say that.
Send me a copy of that.
He missed it.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's been a pleasure.
You didn't get one that had that pretty liberty logo on it?
Yeah.
Number one, number one.
Oh, he just sent it.
Number one.
And I, and I told someone today, mine's always got a lot of commissioners. It's been good.
Oh, you know what it looks like?
Number one. Number one. Thank you, sir. Give back appreciation to your team, sir.
Yeah, definitely.
I got one more here. I failed to mention it while ago.
All right, let me bring him on, so I can get his whooping then. Come on, Mr. Martin. He's on a roll.
I think he was here right before I came in office, uh, twenty-two years ago, and, uh, shoot, man, Recreation Jimmy, this is her. You guys, all you, uh, everyone down there. I mean, there's nobody in the county I can complain to, either department.
Well, I want to say too, you know, we appreciate all the great support you've given the Recreation Department too, Mr. Bowen, and, and, you know, every time you've ever called me, I answered the phone.
I don't know what to say about you. Three times today.
I'm sure we'll be seeing you around.
Somebody's over there coughing.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Um, Mr. Chairman, um, on my last visit here, we, we talked some general terms about plans for spring programs, and I was asked to come back with a more specific plan, and I, I believe you gentlemen and ladies all have that in your packet for today's, for tonight's meeting. Um, hoping that you've had a chance to review it. Um, planning on going through every item on here unless there were some items that we felt there was a, a strong need to discuss. But, um, I do feel that this, this would be a plan that would allow us to, to conduct these programs in the safest possible manner. I do know that some of these plans have been implemented in other areas where they run some programs, and, and they, you know, have, have worked with a, with a good deal of success. And, uh, the spring programs we're talking about are spring soccer, track and field, volleyball, baseball, and softball. Now, all of those programs, with the exception of volleyball, are indoors, which of course, you know, is a lot easier to do outdoors than indoors in the current situation. But as you see on the, on the, uh, plans, there are some additional rules for that indoor sport as well that would, that we would implement in the event that we were conducting an indoor program. And, um, it limits the number of people that would be in the facility. It can, it requires temperature checks, masking, uh, distancing, and, and all of those things that are, are recommended for, you know, during this, this time we're in with the pandemic. But, um, also provided some cost, estimated cost, and, uh, you know, I noted in the memo I sent to you guys that, you know, we've never dealt with this situation before. Um, you know, that's the best estimate we can put on it. Not certain. There'll be a lot of variables that we'd be dealing with that we haven't dealt with before. But it would be, you know, a little expensive to implement those additional measures to, uh, to, to try and, and provide the, the safety and caution that we would need uh, to provide, to run these programs. So, sir, I, I just, you know, offer that up for discussion.
So, that additional cost, uh, Mr. Martin, did you, uh, the ten thousand, two ninety?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, how about, how about your budget in that amount? Is that?
Well, our budget is in shambles right now, to be perfectly honest with you. We have had no income, and we've had very few expenses.
You're right. You wouldn't have.
We, we have, we have, uh, we have, we are under our spending limit by two hundred thousand dollars.
All right, let me just cut the chase then. Commissioners, and maybe unless Mr. McGough and Mr. Brown want to chime in, uh, we would have to be willing then from the general fund to help him with this if we're gonna move forward with his recommendations. Now, let me ask you this, another question. I don't want you, I think I can speak for them, they're here, to do anything that's gonna take you out of your comfort zone just to get something done because it came up at a commission meeting. I, I don't want that. We, we weren't looking for that.
Understood.
But if you can do this comfortably at the ten-two, and then Mr. Brown, Mr. McGough, if we can find those funds to help his, uh, his budget out, then I think, I know, I would consider that. My commissioners can speak for themselves shortly. But, uh, can we, can we?
I, I think we certainly look. I, I want to maybe comment on the proposal a little bit because Jimmy and I had a conversation about one thing, but, uh, you know, as you're aware, recreation is a, um, and this is no, I don't know that it is self-sustaining in any operation. But, but so, uh, the general fund already supplements recreation in a normal year.
Right.
Um, I won't, I haven't looked at their budget, uh, right now to see kind of where things stand there because we didn't bring in any program revenue, but we just hadn't made anything. So, I think Mr. McGough and I'd want to look at that. Would Jimmy, remind me when your sign-up, when you normally start advertising for the spring sports in, in January?
January eleventh is the projected date for beginning registration for some of those programs.
Yeah, even if we had to take a look and get back to you in the first meeting in January,
Mm-hmm.
shore up on that, that would probably be the safest thing to do.
Okay.
The, the other thing Jimmy had some conversation about is that indoor activity. You know, early on, the board talked about monitoring number of people at sites and how difficult that was. My concern here is limiting the number of people who can come watch somebody play. Uh, and, and I can envision a mother with four children who want to come watch her big brother play volleyball and, and can't leave, you know, single parent or either daddies at work, can't leave the people. I mean, I, I think it's going to put his staff in a tremendous situation.
Tough.
Trying to balance and telling somebody they can't come in, and they come late, and all of a sudden, the gentleman's already got the capacity, and they gotta get out, and that and the indoor environment that we'll still be in, in that January, February timeframe,
Okay.
uh, with no vaccinations scares me.
Okay.
So, I, I mean, that's just from, just from administration perspective. I wouldn't doubt that the staff and Jimmy would do everything they could to make sure all of these are right, so. So, the indoor, that indoor environment still scares me with the requirement on staff.
That applies to volleyball?
Yes, sir.
Only? Okay.
Sir, just volleyball.
Just volleyball.
Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of questions, if I may. I, I was just concerned, I'm, I'm concerned about the indoor activities. I, I don't know that I would be in favor of that right now, but on the, I had a couple of other questions. As, as commissioners, I don't, can we go ahead and open up the parks? I mean, it's, I don't know that that many people will be at the parks, but I think we could go ahead and take down the signs that says closed. And let's go ahead and open them up for activities or something.
Commissioner Thrift too.
The outdoor.
Yeah, today, tonight, um, to, you know, to get into that with you guys too and see how we wanted to move forward, if we can move forward with that.
I, I would like us to move forward with opening up the outdoor parks, obviously.
Entertaining motion, Mr. Chairman?
So, yes, sir.
That was one concern I, that I wanted to see done, is go ahead and open up the parks, get those close signs down. People are out there anyway, and I think they should, they need to be out.
Reopen.
To reopen the parks.
Which is different from having gatherings.
Of course. Well, it should be. We, we not permit, they'll have a gathering, but that's, yeah, they're on their own.
Well, and, and, you know, we, we.
Like a Moses' garden, daughter, children want to bring kids to the park, let them swing and stuff.
As, as versus an organized?
Any organized sport where they have to go through your office.
Yeah, or pay for a, a permit to go have a barbecue at.
Gotcha.
Uh, Commissioner Thrift, would, would your recommendation be to include pavilions that we normally rent for, um,
I wouldn't say pavilion.
Activities, involves gatherings.
Right, right. I don't know that we should open up the pavilions.
And what, we don't keep the basketball courts still closed?
Basketball courts, you know, to go back to when, when we re, when we closed, after the initial reopening, um, it was due to, uh, an excessive amount of activity in basketball.
Right.
And those mostly were adults.
Yes, sir.
Or over a child, you know.
Correct. Older teens and adults.
Older teens, but, you know, at the basketball course.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, if with distancing and gathering and if, um, as, as the Recreation Department having, allowing organized sports is one thing. But the reason that we hadn't done that was because of gatherings. If you open up, you're gonna have gatherings. So, so, you, you know, with an organized gathering or unorganized gathering, it's still a gathering. Now, down at Popeyes, that was not an organized gathering, other than seventy-five people organized it. Not through Jimmy. They, they went down there. So, if, if you shut it down to eliminate gatherings, even though organized, you're still gonna get gatherings. So, I, I don't see how you can open it. Uh, the, the park at Jack Carter's Park by my church, um, when everything gets closed down, everybody that had a basketball went over there. We had to take the rims down. You know, and that wasn't organized. That's where everybody went. And if we open up the parks, that's where everybody's gonna go. So, and if you're trying to avoid gatherings. you're opening up for a gathering, not through Jimmy's office, but everybody from Heinzville, Waltherville, Allenhurst, and everywhere be there.
But that's them making their decision to gather, like they decide if they're gonna go shopping in a large gathering.
But they're.
But I, I don't understand why we can't open them up. If they want to gather, let them gather. If they, you know, I don't think we as government should dictate that at this point.
I mean, first of all, it's forty degrees outside. I, I don't know how many people are gonna be at the.
I don't think so either.
But I mean, I, 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 I agree with Commissioner Thrift, but more importantly, I, I just feel like everything should be uniformed. Uh, I, I know with the Board of Education, they're still doing, uh, athletic gatherings, you know, they're playing in the gym and everything. I, I, I just wish us as, uh, a governmental entity, you know, we reach out to the Board of Education because I, I mean, from my understanding, I, I think, uh, AAU teams are, are using their, their facilities too for basketball in, in organized, uh, sports. Uh, man, we, we, we've been, like you said, twenty twenty has been a difficult year for, for everyone, uh, from government to personal. Uh, I, I see the plan, Jimmy. Uh, we have a plan. We, we just have to figure out if, if we're gonna accept the plan or, or, or not. But, you know, we've been dealing with this since March, and if, if we expect our citizens to stay in the house for, for another four or five months, good luck with that. That's not gonna happen. So I, me personally, I feel like we, you know, we need to look at this plan. We need to look at the other governmental entities and come with a uniform plan. Us doing one thing, the Board of Education doing something else. That's, that's the most comments that I receive from phone calls and everything else. Why is, why is the Recreation Department shut down? But these other counties around us are open, and then they're saying, well, you know, the school, the Board of Education, they're having organized sports, so why can't we? So the older kids are able to play basketball and everything, but we're not doing nothing on our end. So, you know, whichever way we go, I just wish, you know, it was one lane. You know, we, we have, we doing one thing in the city of Heinzville, doing something else, Board of Education doing something else. The counties next to us, all, all the surrounding counties, aren't, aren't most of them, they're, they're still having participate with sports for the most part, right?
Some are, varying degrees of success. Some have had to shut down their operations, you know, once they started on.
Right.
Some have done very well with it, you know, it's, uh, it, it's sporadic, I would say.
Right, but I, I, I know, uh, me personally, I haven't heard any, any outbreaks from, you know, from, from other entities close to us about, you know, from recreational sports. I'm not saying that it, it's not going, happening or whatnot, but also we, we need to just look at Liberty County too, Mr. Chair. You know, I mean, I, I know, I know you receiving updates on a daily basis, uh, with our numbers. Uh, for the most part, our numbers are pretty staying better than, than a lot of other places. I don't know if that's because less people are being tested or our numbers are just, just that good. But. When Commissioner Thrift mentioned open, my perception, well, maybe it was wrong, was just, should I take down the signs so people could, um, use the parks? I, I guess that's much what we have now, but, but I did not see that meaning basketball games. I, I know we don't have very many basketball courts that are.
Quite a few.
Do we? Okay. So I didn't see basketball as part of, of, of that, but I just saw it being open so people could know that the parks are open for them to use. That's kind of what I envisioned.
That's correct.
Not to say you can come and do organized, that, keep the basketball courts however you have them. Can you tape them off or?
Well, we're fortunate to have fenced in some places or we're able to close them up.
Something like that, so.
For example, has a fence around it.
Yeah.
Popeyes has a fence around it, not the chicken place, but the basketball court.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, uh, and Walterville, Hillary Park, we took the goals off.
Okay, okay.
Well, the one over, I was talking about, that's fenced in, and they, they jumped the fence and played basketball.
That, that one is pretty high. They aren't able to jump that fence very much. They do at Gun Branch pretty often.
They do, yeah.
Um, and we're, you know, constantly having to try and, you know, ask them to leave playgrounds especially. Uh, we don't have fences around most of the playgrounds. So that all yours is closed sign and some, some, it doesn't stop at all from using.
You put a sign up there at the park to, hey, open to the public, but no organized activity.
Take, take the goals down.
Simple, just to put, well, they take it down and we put it up. Their, their fault. I'm sure they don't take the sign down.
Well, you know, in the previous opening, we didn't have any organized activities other than, you know, the, a number of people would show up on the courts and start playing basketball.
Didn't they have a car show down there in Fleming a few times?
They were going to. They, they were going to, but it was averted at, you know.
They have had one down there.
It was stopped in, actually in the middle of it, you know, it was stopped.
I was gonna say it. Hey, I don't care. This is my last.
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, on that part, you want to motion on the?
Open with restrictions, however you, are, are you able to manage that, sir?
What's that, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry?
Yeah, you know, the, the, the thought that she and I had, parks open to outdoor recreation activity, but not basketball game, not those kind of things. Can, are you able to manage, are you able to?
I mean.
I want to put you at disadvantage.
It, there's only one way to open a basketball courts.
Yeah.
They're open.
Yeah.
Individual responsibility takes over. It's up to you to decide if you're gonna play in a basketball game of five-on-five full court.
Hmm.
And because it will happen if they're open.
Yeah.
We, we, we learned that in the previous opening that we had.
I understand.
So, I mean, I, I just feel like that's gonna happen, and there will also be times where other facilities will have a lot of people on them, perhaps a skate park, perhaps a playground.
Hmm.
Particularly there behind our office at, uh, here in town.
Mm-hmm.
Very, very popular playground. There'll be at times more people there than you would like to have there. So what do we, again, it's a matter of individual responsibility.
I think so.
Okay, we're ready to move on. I got to go.
The only thing, Mr. Chairman, I'd say is pursuant to governor's order, we're gonna have to monitor because it is our property. We are liable to make sure that gatherings don't occur with more than X people on our property. I mean, I think, and we can certainly search Kelly out a little more on that, but, but with, with the mandates that we're doing for masking, mandate countywide, but all that, we're, we're gonna have to, we're, we're gonna have to make sure a large, a large event doesn't just happen.
So you can't just, so signage alone is not?
I think signage would be good. I think signage to say, uh, parks open for non-organized gatherings of more than X people. And, and then I think that's it. And, and then we just.
And Mr. Chairman, I would just add that, you know, uh, I'd love to see the parks reopened.
I know you would.
And professionally too. However, I don't want to give the perception that we can control.
I understand.
Like Mr. Brown said, I mean, you know, I, we, this board has said before, they didn't want staff from Recreation Department to be involved in trying to police the people using the parks in an unauthorized manner.
Right, right. Kind of enter at your own risk, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. All right, but, but, all right, if you will, Commissioner Thrift, if you will, um, you're gonna check with Kelly, uh, as far as the.
I'll get a feed, yes, sir, on that.
Can you come back to our first meeting in, um, January, if you will, please, sir?
And I think, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, sir.
Sorry.
Just to say, we could also make, come closer to a decision on spring sports, I would think, at that time as well.
I, I thought you may have been ready. If we just take out, take out volleyball, I thought you may have been comfortable with your, are you?
Yes, sir.
All right. If we just remove volleyball from this piece, this document he gave us.
From this document, that's the only indoor.
Right.
Swim.
Okay.
So let's go ahead and approve that.
Yes, sir. I'll make that motion.
Second? Second. Everybody clear?
I think the motion, let, let me look at it later.
That's for the parks.
I'm, I'm not, but.
All, all in favor of approving this document, this person, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Walton had a question.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't know what I'm voting.
What are you voting on, to leave it open?
Uh, the, the, the consideration on the table is to adopt the spring sport recommendation absent volleyball because it's an indoor sport.
That is correct. Yes. I made the motion.
I second. All in favor? Of the polls. Can Miss Gillard, your polls?
You got the document?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm lost.
We gotta give him some guidance. They, they need to do.
But, I mean, there, there's still no guidance. Chairman, everybody's feelings on this. I mean, believe me, I, it is, but this, uh, this situation has come pretty close to home here, and I, I know that that gathering in Little Wishy the other day, uh, everybody sat on Santa Claus's lap was not anything that you ever thought of, but until the signage is up, uh, my feeling is totally to, to keep them locked. Till that signage is up, and we know that whoever's going in there is going in there at their own risk. Um, I know when they go and vote, they're gonna be in the Schuman Center, and that's at their own risk. That's why we were given the opportunity for, uh, absentee ballot, so, um, I don't, I don't agree with putting the, the public out there, and, and I understand opening it up, but I can tell you, if you open it up, it's gonna be packed. So I'm, I'm, uh, I'm not in favor of that part of it right there. Some of the spring sports, I say we ought to wait till we see what happens with this, uh, you know, with the, the virus and, and, uh,
Vaccine.
See the inoculation record and see if it's good or bad, but that's all I'm gonna say about it.
So, so just to reclarify, the motion on the, the motion on the table is to consider the spring sports schedule absent volleyball? That's, that's really the motion that's on the table right now.
That's right. Because that's the only indoor.
Well, I, yeah, I'm not, I'm not for doing anything until we're sure about what's gonna happen there with, uh, you know, the, this, uh, COVID. I'm gonna tell you right now, I don't, I don't care if you go into Gertie's door or whatever, you're gonna be able to mask on. We can't control these people. So, um, government, everybody looks at it as dollar bills, so I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not voting for that. I'll, you get that vote.
Yes, what was the vote, sir?
So you had, uh, right now, uh, Gillard and Walton opposed.
Okay, all right. Move forward, sir, with the, I think, with volleyball for spring.
Proceed with plans for those, as if we're gonna have them.
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure.
Right, right, uh-huh.
A little confusing there for a moment, but.
Very confusing.
So we will proceed with plans to have spring programs except for the indoor program of volleyball.
I have one more question. What are your employees currently doing now that everything indoors is closed?
Well.
Those, I know a lot of them worked on the outside, like on the fields. What, what are, what are your employees doing? And how many do you have? What are they doing?
We have, um, quite a few that are involved in, in monitoring the groups that are using the fields under the limited usage program that our, our, our policy that we developed so that some groups, as long as they went through the guidelines that were established, did a request, then they could use the, the, those facilities under those limited amount of usage. So I've, have all of our sports crew is involved in monitoring tennis courts and, but baseball fields and softball fields and soccer fields for those groups that are using them.
And about how many groups are we, are out there?
Typically, we have somebody just about every day, at, at least one or two every day.
But not during the day. They may at night if they're, if they're in school. So you have some of those groups coming out there in the evenings, and so you, your, uh, employees are not necessarily eight to five. They may come in later so that they can be out there with that group that's out there at eight o'clock or out there now.
Their, their normal work schedule is like one to nine, and they've continued to work on that schedule.
I was just wondering if you had enough work to keep those folks busy now that a lot of this is shut down.
Well, and another, another thing we've had to do is to monitor temperature, have temperature checks at the doors of a couple of facilities too, so we have to have somebody there to do that. Uh, I've got two facilities that are closed down, Riceboro Youth Center and Schuman Recreation Center. So those employees have been tasked with other duties like monitoring temperature checks. And they had to be at their facilities for the voting that is taking place now and, and, uh, you know, during those times. Um, a lot of maintenance activities going on.
That's why I was thinking maybe they were doing some sprucing up here and there.
Lot of maintenance activities. I, I would encourage everyone to go check out the parks in your area. Um, I promise you that there has been a tremendous amount of work done at all those parks, and, and that's been one of the main, main things we've done with this free time is to try to catch up on the projects that we had, maintenance type projects we had. You know, our supply room is speaking span and totally organized and, you know, we've, we've caught up on all of our little, little projects that we had sitting around it hard to get to.
Well, that's good to hear. Are you, but we're not offering after-school programs?
No, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
One quick question. Yes or no answer? What is out there midway? Is it open or closed now?
Closed, except for the swim team.
Well, then it's open. Well, I'm just thinking, you know, we're shutting down our parks, but we're allowing these people here to gather.
Yeah, we voted on that.
Think about it.
Our swimming pool was open during.
We voted on that.
We had, the pools were open in a normal operation during summer, yes, sir.
An organized sport. Organized sport.
Allow them to do it during COVID.
Uh-huh.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, darn. So what's the problem with opening the parks?
Yeah, I, I know that. I, I was off around, um, my birthday around Thanksgiving, and my wife and I, we, we went walking at Stafford Park. And, uh, then I think the next day or two, we went to, um, James Brown Park. Now, so when we say we need to open the parks, the, the, the walking trails and the running track at Stafford.
You're open.
I mean, they, they open. It's, it's not like we got a, uh, an electrical wire that you can't get in there. I mean, the parks are open, but, but we, we're limiting the, uh, certain things that was causing people to gather and, and, and bringing attention. You, you, uh, when we went out to Stafford Park, there were probably ten other people out there walking. But, but you can, you know, you, we, we, we did certain things to keep our distance, and I guess they did the same thing. And you could go to, um, James Brown Park and that quarter or that mile trail or whatever that is. I mean, it's, it's a lot of, people are using, using the parks. So it's not like Liberty County has put a padlock on, on every park and you can't get in there. I mean, you know, so there, there is some activity. Yeah, maybe they can't play basketball. Maybe we don't have.
Playground.
The Reds versus the Pirates in ninety-year-old T-ball. Maybe we don't have that, but people that want to get out and do some things still do. But, you know, we, I'm, I'm totally against organized sports, um, until this pandemic, uh, gets better. And I'm totally against, um, allowing people unorganized to come there and gather and just, I mean, you, you, it'd be a super spreader event. I mean, that, that's why I called Jimmy back earlier this year, and when I rode by, because I got some calls about the, the park at, um, next to Popeyes. I mean, it was crazy in there. And, and we took action. And if you allow it, you know, it's gonna get crazy again. Not right now because it's December, it's thirty-five degrees. But, um, the sun is gonna come up and it's gonna be sixty, and people gonna get out there, and when the word get out that it's open, we gonna be right back doing the same thing, um, that we did, uh, when we closed it. And, and that's just my thought, but we've already voted, and, and I'm, I know Jimmy, um, does a great job. He's a great director. He's trying to put together a program so that we could do some things, but I am totally against, um,
Organized sports.
O, o, organized sports during, during this pandemic because you, you, you don't have to do that. You, you, you do not have to do that.
Well, it's like the park. I'm really referring to the park on Freeman Grove Road there in Fleming. There ain't nothing there but a little playground and pavilion, and pavilion's locked up, but we're keeping everybody out. The Popeye's closed. You can't even, you can't take the youngins to the playground and swing. I mean, that makes no sense. It shouldn't be. There's nothing there but the playground for the kids to play in. I don't think they're gonna get that organized swinging.
All right, sir.
And, and, and Mr. Chairman, it's just.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to make sure I'm clear, to come back in January, first, first meeting in January to, to discuss more of the park openings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, we'll proceed with plans for, for the other.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Be clear.
Very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I got a question for Mr. Martin, and I know it's not only concerning, uh, we sent a request into your board, to the Recreation Board for the naming of the Bribe Bay Park, and the reply, I saw one part of it and it was confusing. Uh, and one of it says maybe something in the city of Riceboro should be named after this person. But the Bribe Bay Park is in the city limits of Riceboro. Uh, and I was, I was a little confused on that.
Understand. I believe it was, um, and I don't have that memo in front of me, I apologize, but I believe it was referring to a City of Riceboro facility. Um, for example, Riceboro Youth Center and the park that's right behind the Riceboro Youth Center were City of Riceboro projects. Probably some that Mr. Rutherford was involved in. Probably some that Mr. Rutherford was involved in, particularly the youth center. Um, and the thought was, you know, perhaps those would be more appropriate for him, being that he was on the city council and that was one of the projects he worked on. Um, I would, you know, have to admit that several of the recreation board members did not know Mr. Rutherford. Uh, may have heard of him, but they didn't know him. Uh, I explained that he had, you know, contributions to the city council in Riceboro and, um, you know, I was asked what he involved in recreation. I, I'm not aware of any of his involvement in recreation. So I think that was a reason that there was a recommendation to possibly consider those facilities that the city of Riceboro had intimately involved in instead of the county park, which maybe he had no involvement in.
Okay, I'm gonna shoot straight with you and I'm gonna let it go. I've also heard that there's a member of the present recreation board would like to have that park named after him. That's not gonna happen.
Active member?
Understand.
An active member?
Active member. I'm not gonna, that's not gonna happen.
Um. Oh, name is Patrick D. Bowen.
Okay.
Um.
So, I mean, they need to be careful on what they're doing.
Understand, I, I, and I would just add, Commissioner Stevens, I don't think that had anything to do with the decision. However, uh, that has been mentioned, I would admit that.
Yep.
It has come to my attention.
Commissioner Stevens, I'd like to just say something now, um, if the Riceboro Youth Center or the playground or the walking track that's behind there are, um, the Liberty County, the commissions, we, we're not, um, we, we, we don't own those, do we?
Yes, sir, the, the Riceboro Youth Center was built with a community development block grant obtained by the city of Riceboro. Now, we have a partnership with them, agreement that we operate the facility, uh, we made some investment in furnishings in that facility, but it's their facility.
Right, but, but one, one that's owned by the county, the, the county commissions can have some say so in the naming of that.
Absolutely, I mean.
Um, the name, it, it'd be like the name of, of a, of a school. We, we're not the Board of Education, so, you know, we can give them what we, what we think, but, but we, we, we can't do that. But if it's a county park like Briar Bay Park and it's named after the community and that's a county park, we cut the grass and we maintain it. And, uh, you know, we, people that wanna, um, have events down there and stuff, that they come through us, so that's, that's the county. But they don't, y'all don't do that with the youth center down there, do you?
Yes, sir, we maintain it.
So we are, we are involved in the youth center?
We are involved.
Involved, but not.
It's their facility, we operate, basically.
Okay.
And I'd like to add too, for everyone, I mean, I think the board, recreation board understands that this board makes the decision. I mean, they were asked, they were asked for a recommendation, they gave it, but, you know.
I, I, I don't know, y'all have to really realize the difference in authority. Yeah. An award.
Yes, that's where you own that, I don't know why y'all be asking you own that park.
But, shall I make it to Riceboro Youth Center, Commissioner?
Make a motion.
No, no.
That what we're talking about?
No, 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 we didn't.
Airboard.
The park, the, the Briar Bay Park, we do own and we did, we, we did do improvements in there, yes, sir.
Briar Bay Park was built by the county.
Correct.
Many years ago, I mean, the county has totally funded Briar Bay Park.
But, but I guess, I, I guess, I guess what, what, I guess what I was headed, Jimmy, and I think you touched on it. It's kinda like if the, the planning commission makes a recommendation for disapproval, we could vote for approval.
Absolutely.
Okay, if the recreation board, uh, doesn't think that's a good idea to name that park and, and we think it is, then we vote and, and it still happens.
I, I think it gets named that then.
Okay, yeah, so, thanks, but no thanks, it's kind of.
Understand, yes, sir, I guess so.
Joey.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Walden?
Yes, sir.
I, I wanted a moment there, um, I, I, I believe I heard Commissioner Stevens said he was interested in, in, in naming that park and the, and the individual that they're talking about, believe it or not, was involved in the recreation. He was not a city member, but when that swimming pool was opened up, Commissioner Stevens at Stafford Park, um, Mr. Rutherford was there. I can tell you, I've seen him there a number of times. When my wife worked up there, he would bring kids to the park, he was interested in seeing them learn how to swim. Um, and it really don't make any difference to me, we'll name, if we own the other one down by the old fire station, we can name that too. But, um, that'd be a fitting thing to do for Mr. Rutherford, not just because he was in the city limits of Riceboro, but the things that he did in Liberty County. I mean, you know, you don't have to wave a flag up to say who you are. Um, Henry Rutherford just stood up and stood tall, so, um, if that's your wishes, um.
Make the motion.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll make a motion that we name the Briar Bay Park in honor of Mr. Henry Rutherford.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, do we officially name the Briar Bay Park in honor of the late honorable Henry Rutherford, a long time city councilperson for the city of Riceboro and Liberty County citizen that was seen a little bit everywhere. Everywhere. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's honored to name that park and, uh, thank you, sir, in honor of Mr. Rutherford.
Would we proceed with a plan similar to what we had for the naming of the basketball courts, uh, Commissioner Frazier, where it was gonna be done at a later date?
Yes, sir, yeah, after the, yes.
And all this.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Very well.
Also, uh, uh, since we mentioned that, Mr. Chairman, we might wanna, when we do all of this together, we can do a plaque for the gym at the complex.
Now you're asking a lot now.
Yes, I am. We didn't think about that when we, we was gonna name it Sam Harris Gym, whatever, um, either small thing, whatever it is, just.
Work it out.
Put it on prior to opening, you think, renovation, Commissioner Stevens?
That'll be fine.
We, yeah, we've already done that, haven't we? I mean, we've already voted to name it.
Yeah, yeah, we already voted, but we didn't say we was gonna put something.
And, and the basketball court, we, we, we voted on that, but we were gonna wait.
We were waiting on the.
The ceremony.
Poppy circumstance.
Right, yeah, so all of this will fit under the same category.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
There was one thing, I guess while he's here, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Director Ash related and Commissioner Bowen, I think probably wanna address this, but he had asked, and I think you saw it on Mr. Long's report, about doing some redo to the final plans there on Gil Park. I think, and Commissioner Bowen again may wanna address this, there were some improvements he wanted to make over there.
What I was willing to do was, uh, have Jimmy, give Jimmy some money, the recreation department, some funds to do the basketball courts and, uh, a walking trail around Gil Park, try and get that done. I know it took off pretty good and it kinda got stale, but, uh, maybe with the funding, you'd be able to do those two items.
Be great, greatly appreciated.
Yeah, just when you put the basketball, don't put the hoop up there, make sure you don't.
You'll probably hold off on that aspect of it.
Sure.
Mr. Martin.
Yes, sir.
I know we keep on spinning, but let's not forget about Miller Park, cause each time we spin, we're taking away from Miller Park.
Well, that's coming out of my road money now.
He's, he's done.
Out of your road money?
To the rec department. Fine.
Yes, sir, he's funding that.
Out of his road money.
Go on.
Okay.
He gonna.
It's coming out of his road money.
Well, it's coming out of, did not rest say road money, but it's coming out of.
Your, your district fund.
Fund set aside for improvements, whether it's recreation, we give into recreation before, everybody has, and I'm trying to get to the park.
Right.
Mr. Brown, you might wanna explain that a little more specifically.
Yeah, you might wanna explain that one to me.
For the record, so, so first, I guess first, do we have an estimate? Did Trent do an estimate on what those two items were?
Hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, so, so, a- and I guess so the second thing is to ask Commissioner Bowen or ask Ms. McLaughlin as far as the funds that are clear. In there, um.
Funding is available?
Fu- funding is available to do that.
Yeah.
And so then we take a board, a motion and a second by the board to authorize the movement of those funds to recreation?
Go ahead.
For that purpose.
Yes, sir, I make that motion, we, uh, transfer the funds over to recreation.
Second.
And just for clarification, that's money coming out of his district road money to be shifted over to recreation.
That's correct.
I don't think it needed more discussion, all in favor? Make the transfer. Thank you, sir, Commissioner Walden.
And it's been a pleasure.
Did you hear me, Joey?
Yes, sir.
We did.
I'm gone, guys.
No, 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 Pat, we should've held that motion to last.
No, no, timeout, timeout, no, no, no.
That's a good note to go out on, right?
Ooh.
And all, and go home.
Pat, I had a speech and everything.
Please don't hesitate to talk, cause I won't hesitate.
We got a tree.
Hey, Pat, hey, I'm, I'm, I'm down here.
Pat.
Alright, look.
Pat, we got a tree leaning.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
We got a tree leaning down the road down there.
Yeah, I thought about him.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowen.
I mean.
Alright, we'll, don't change the number.
You got something else? You got something else? Why couldn't you do it all at one time?
Yeah, the one you wanted.
Mr. Chairman, I never intended to take up this much time with the.
Well, we did, we did.
Gladly sit down if you guys are finished with it.
We do, we're done, so, thank you, sir.
We'll catch up with you and then we'll sit down and see how we can stop, stop Paul from wanting for that.
Welborn Street Drainage.
That's Paul.
Welborn Street Drainage.
Paul Simonson, is, is he, is he gonna present, Joey?
He is, Paul, are you on the line? He is not here, sir.
He was down in the lobby earlier.
Um, I'll go check, I'm just gonna go check, I think.
Alright, anybody's checking, lease agreement Colonel's Island Fishing Club.
Um, yes, sir, Mr. Davis is on the phone for this. We discussed this last time, so what you got there is, uh, as provided by Mr. Davis. And, and I, go ahead, Kelly, I'll, I will, uh, yield to you.
Yeah, sure, evening, everybody. I think there was, you know, we, we had a, a lease existing with Eastern District, uh, Fire Department. And we used as a basis for this lease, the one we had with them, and so some changes were needed. Cause I think most of you probably appreciate that the Sport Fishing Club is gonna want to use the facility from time to time, not often, for their meetings or any special events. Uh, and so the lease provides they can do that under certain conditions. Um, but otherwise, it's largely identical to the lease we had with, uh, Eastern Fire District. Uh, you have a rental pay is the same, there's a standard one thousand dollar payment for the entire lease term. No other payments we made, except that we will be obligated to pay for the utilities to, to the facility as well as the, uh, the property taxes each year. So other than that, uh, there really no, there's no monetary consideration that we're giving to the, the club for use of the facility. And today, you know, they've been very good partners. And I guess I should back up, I think most of you understand probably the eastern, that, uh, um, Mr. Martin, um, and Eastern District, um, uh, transferred this property to the Colonel's Island Sport Fishing Club, the nonprofit corporation. So they now own the property, so that's the reason we're having to enter into this new lease. Uh, but it fully protects the, the county and is otherwise largely consistent with the lease that we had with Mr. Martin. Probably happy to answer your questions you have. And the only thing I would say is, tonight I would ask you to, to authorize Chairman to decide the lease, uh, subject to whatever changes might be, uh, recommended by me and approved by him. We haven't yet heard, uh, officially from the club as to some, um, last minute changes made by me. I don't think, I don't anticipate any problems. If we have to negotiate, you know, one item or so, it would be helpful to authorize Donald to do that.
Alright, any questions from, uh?
Mr. Chairman, was this the, uh, the, uh, group or the lady that came and presented?
Uh-uh.
About the, about this.
You might have, you might have to translate, Joey, I can't hear very well.
Yeah, it, uh, we can hold, Commissioner Thrift, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering, is this lease with the, um?
It's the fire station, this is not the.
This is the fire station?
Not the sailing club.
Not the sailing club?
It is, yep, yep, I'm sorry, I should've, I should've mentioned that, it, it's for the.
It was a lady that came and presented at Colonel's Island?
And of course, you know, you folks know, it's, it's pretty important to our, uh, the county's, uh, uh, fire system. It, it helps reduce, and as well as helps reduce the insurance rates in that area. Uh, it's, it's very strategically located and helpful to us and our, and the citizens.
Yeah, Kelly, we had had, if, if you remember, we had the, um, Savannah Sailing Center that came about doing something at Sunbury here. But that's, that is, that is a separate.
Separate.
Yes, ma'am, this, this is not associated with it in any way.
Okay, thank you.
I think, and I think Commissioner Walden also has a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I just was, uh, the building, would it change him from volunteer fire station or whatever, the ADA requirement? How about that, that we?
So, we, we will not be utilizing, I wouldn't say we totally wouldn't be utilizing, but at least not on a regular basis, uh, any kind of improvements that the club is projected to make in the, in the old kitchen and gathering area. Uh, the club is projected to, to be making those and they would need to talk with the building officials about ADA requirements, uh, at that time. Uh, you know, without trying to get into the ADA requirements, that'll be kinda up to them.
That's, you know, and, and, sorry, Eddie, you know, and, and, you, we, we have occupied, uh, you know, the, the station for a little while, although it's been volunteered, and I don't, I don't think any ADA issues has, has, uh, come up, you know, since, since that occupation, but we'll, we'll look into that, I don't, I don't anticipate there will be many, if at all.
Mr. Chairman, another thing to note too, I've, I noticed, finally gotten let in, uh, was the secretary for the, uh, organizations here, Mr. Donald Carter? Um, if there's any questions for the club, but we received this today, so as, as Mr. Davis mentioned, we, you know, we'll look over it. It's substantially the same and then, you know, come back to the board if there's any substantial changes in it.
Yep, and I, I've worked with, with Joel Osteen and, you know, the club has let us know what their needs are. And so in the revisions, we've tried to address those. You know, for example, I think the club, as Joey mentioned, wants to make some minor alterations, uh, which would have, I think, help both parties. Um, and their, you know, of course, they, the, the essential concern was their ability to share the facility with us from time to time. And that's been specifically addressed in the lease.
Yeah, the only question I'd have would be for Mr. Carter, some real close access fishing drops, that's all I would really need.
Be glad to build that in the lease times too, if we need to.
I think, I think it's proprietary information.
Mr. Stevens, you had a, you had a question?
Uh, I was gonna ask Mr. Mr. Carter, will he come up? I thought he was gonna get by. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Carter, just a, a small quick, how, you are gonna be the owner of the bill, this facility, right?
Yes, sir.
So, at what percentage would you all be using it?
Um.
Don't know?
It, it, well, it's gonna vary, um, wintertime, we'll probably have some fundraisers, like for instance, um, January, we're having a fundraiser, you know, and actually trying to gain membership.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because it's a brand new club.
Right.
And, um, we'll be utilizing it, of course, some in January. Um, as fishing, depending on what time of the year, as it progresses and tournaments and everything else are going along with the season for fishing, you know, that may vary. And for that being said, you know, it, it can be periodic, but, you know, I can't, I can't pin down how many days, you know what I mean?
That's true, but, uh, what I was getting at, I was looking at the utility, Mr. Brown, has it been changed over to the county or is it still?
It, no, it, no, it's still, it's with the county, cause we still have, we still are ongoing in there, so it, that, we, we've been paying utilities in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, pretty well, I was just looking at the percentage of uses, that's all, Mr. Carter.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir. I'll, you know, I'll just let you know, they do have heaters that they run in there to keep the trucks, you know, in a stable atmosphere.
Yeah.
You know, for, if they just need to get out and get going in a hurry.
Yeah.
So, that might be part of some of the utility too.
Thank you, sir, good to collaborate with you.
Alright, okay.
Alright, did we vote, sir?
We have not, sir.
We're not, uh, all in favor of the lease agreement with Colonel's Island Fishing Club, raise your right hand, please, collaborate. Fire service, thank you, sir, thank you all for working with us.
Did we make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I think we did.
We didn't make a motion.
When did it make a motion?
You ever to get to the motion?
No, sir.
A lot of discussion before the motion, alright.
Alright, we need to make a motion.
Somebody give, offer the motion, please.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we entered agreement with the, uh, what you call?
And then, uh, Mr. Stevens, I think you're the one making a motion, if I could, if you could just amend it to, to, uh, say together whatever, whatever changes or recommended by me and approved by the chairman.
That was his motion.
Yes, we'd make some tweaks to the agreement.
Just a simple so mover, take care of all that.
Yeah.
So move.
Second.
I follow you there.
Now I think we had adequate discussion, now all in favor, raise your hand. Thank y'all for, thank y'all for the catch. I'm not beyond having help.
Thank you, sir, all is back, Mr. Chairman.
All is back, yeah, he is back, come on. Welborn Street Drainage, sir, you wanna bring us up to speed on? That project? Good to see you on this side.
Yes, sir. Okay, um, yeah, I'm here to talk to you tonight about the, um, the drainage project, we, we called it the Welborn Street, uh, Drainage Improvements. Basically, the, the project is on the, uh, west end of Main Street Park, where the, uh, where the walkway goes from Main Street up to Welborn Street. And, um, o- over the years, there's been some pretty severe erosion, especially on the upper end, and so, uh, this project basically will put pipe in that ditch from Welborn Street down to just past Ashmore, so about two hundred and fifty feet of, of ditch will be piped. And then, um, you know, the, the shrubbery taken out, putting back the sidewalk, things like that in there. So it'll be drainage improvements there, and then there's, there's some, um, some damage that's caused by the erosion, we'll be, we'll be, uh, repairing that. So we put the plans together, got those approved, then, uh, we put out for bid, and we opened bids on November twenty-fourth, and we got four bids. One was from, uh, Palm Coast Utilities for two hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Bid from Y Delta for two hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars. A bid from APAC at, um, Atlantic for three hundred and seventy-one, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and then McLendon for four hundred and three thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars. Obviously, the low bidder was, uh, Palm Coast Utilities, and, um, uh, un, is there any questions about the project, what the scope of it was?
I mean, I think you, unless Commissioner Gill want to add to what you said.
No, no, it's, uh, as, as Paul said, it's on the upstream end of Main Street Park. Main Street Park is right by Ameris Bank, the, the, the gazebo, you, you see the park when you ride by Main Street. But the Liberty Trail goes from, from the gazebo all the way up to Welborn Street. And that, that, that water from over around by Bradwell, that hole off of General Scrivern, all that water comes through that, um, through that ditch and comes out to Main Street, and then crosses on there and goes by the, um, the Heritage, the Heritage Bank out to, by the fire station.
Right.
Over to the Brian Commons, o- o- over in that area, so it's, it'd be a major drainage upgrade, but there's some severe erosion. The Liberty Trail is part of a historic site here in, um, Hinesville. But that, but that trail, there is some severe erosion, there's a lot of water come through there, you could go through there after a heavy rain, and you can hear the water roaring. That's how much water comes through there, and it's, all that erosion is eating away at the banks, uh, on the Ashmore Street side. There's a fence, a privacy fence, a cyclone fence, that's just been dangling, you know, it's, it's just, it's just there, so that's where the piping comes. Pipe it from Welborn, past Ashmore, and then, you know, the design would be to slow the water down before it gets out to Main Street Park. It'll be, it'll be, it's a great project, something that, that we've been talking about for years, Paul.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and Gary's right, downstream from the pipes, we've, we've put in some plunge pools and things like that to slow the water down before it gets to Main Street. And, you know, we're, we're actually working on a tap project for downtown that will replace more pipe downstream, so it'll even get better in the future, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that water actually heading for all those weirds? Is that what they're called?
Pardon me? Well, in.
Stop and hold water before it goes on?
Yeah, in, in this case, not really weird, what we're doing, though, is we're putting check dams across the thing, and then as, and there's kind of a natural pool in there where the water comes down, and it falls down and goes. And so what we're doing is building a rock dam on the, on the lower side of that, so that actually it'll build a pool to slow things down as it comes through. Yeah, yes, sir.
That the water coming out of Fort Stewart?
Actually, that water starts up on the, uh, Fort Stewart Railroad, up there where just about Isaiah Street, and, and it works its way down through there, comes from, uh, Brad, part of Bradwell, uh, Institute drains into there, and then all of those apartments in, um, um, in between those areas all come down in that area. It's kind of, is, is the, the, the big basin up there that follows that whole area.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
This water eventually runs, filtered into the Peacock Canal, right?
It eventually does, yes, sir, it goes through the pond at Bront Commons, and then out of there, and then, and then into the tributary down to, to, uh, Peacock Creek, Peacock Canal.
Chairman, that's something that we, we'll need to keep in mind, too, because Peacock Canal has not, I know that's a core engineer issue, Mr. Long, so we need to keep in mind of what's happening to Peacock Canal, too, on the end. I don't know how that can be looked at, but it's something to be looked at.
According to what they said, they should improve, um, because you're slowing the water up.
Well, it, it'll improve the water quality.
Yeah.
And, you know, what we're trying to do is, when you put the pipe in, it speeds the water up a little bit, but we are trying to slow it down with these plunge pools, so that the net impact is to have the cleaner water that go there on that. Yes, sir.
All right. Commissioner Gill, your partner, this is?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, myself, uh, Commissioner Walden, uh, Commissioner Bowden, uh, but before he leaves, he's gonna, he's gonna give us, he's gonna, he's gonna give us a couple, a couple of dimes. Yeah, he, he's very.
Having a good night.
He's very generous, he's very generous as he exits. And, and, and we, and we also are getting some help from, um, uh, Councilwoman Diane Reed, that, that, that's her district as well, so, um, you know, myself, Eddie, Pat, and, um, and from the city, uh, Councilwoman Reed.
Good collaboration.
It's a great, it's a great project, it's something that's, that's long overdue.
Well, then, then I'm assuming I can get a motion in a second from you, too?
Yeah, yes, sir, uh, I, I'll make the motion that, that we accept a bid from, uh, Palm Coast, Paul, you gave the number, I just wrote down the, the big numbers, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, I didn't do the nickels and dimes, but whatever that number is.
Two hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
That number, and I, I, I make, I make the motion, uh, that we accept a bid from Palm Coast.
Okay.
I'll click it.
Oh, Commissioner Walden, second, and further discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand.
He's not a handicap.
Good to see a collaborative partner with the governmental.
Yes, sir.
Partners working together.
What, you know, and, and we, we did the same on, um, the sidewalk.
Sure did.
Of, on Glen Brown, all the way out to Walsterville.
At the record show?
I'm, I'm still trying to figure, um, that part of Walsterville that ends in Commissioner Thrift's district, why she didn't, um, anticipate that, I, I, I don't know, I'm, um, I'm, I'm gonna talk with her about that when we get in the back.
Y'all have a sidebar. Thank you, Mr. Simonson.
Okay, thank y'all.
Good to see you, sir, take care of yourself.
Paul, do, do you know when they gonna start?
Actually, I, I talked to Sean about that, and he said that he wanted to go ahead and get the notice to proceed, so he could go ahead and get the pipe ordered in this fiscal year. And so, uh, his pipe will be coming in sometime in, in the, uh, January timeframe, and, and soon as it gets there, he'll be starting to get that done.
So, and notice, and this is the notice to proceed?
What we'll do is we'll do the notice of award.
Okay.
Tonight, I mean, we'll, when I get back, I'll send him a notice of award and the contracts, and then generally, it'll take them about, the bonding company, right here in the middle of the holidays, it'll probably take a month to get the bonds, insurance and everything, and sign contracts, and then he'll be off and running.
Okay.
Another place of one of them green splash signs.
Yeah.
Lost that word.
Yeah, we're good.
All right.
Pat, you can't leave right now.
Okay. Mr. Culbertson, solid waste, thank you, sir, for being patient.
You may remember, uh, gosh, how many years ago it's been now, five, only? Little bit of history real quickly, the county used not to have solid waste fees, uh, that it did, uh, yet some of y'all remember that, and as a result, uh, general fund was left picking up the tab for a lot, uh, on a due to solid waste. Commission made a great decision, uh, five, six years ago, actually, uh, to consider solid waste fees in lieu of those, uh, that's turned things around completely. Uh, at that time, John Culbertson, Culbertson Associates, who specializes in doing those studies, was contracted by the board, laid out a five-year plan for that fee schedule, uh, this real comprehensive, as you'll see, covers upcoming capital improvements to be made, projects growth in the county in certain sectors, takes a hard look at operations, did that five-year plan. It's time, it has been time, as you know, to update that, and so the board contracted again with Mr. Culbertson to do that, and he's here tonight, after considering all those things, to give a final report.
Thank you very much, and, um, let me check, are you comfortable if I, um?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you eleven feet away.
Yeah, very well, very well, thank you. Um, and thank you for the introduction, um, my name is John Culbertson, I'm a principal, uh, let's go to the next slide, because it's got a quick introduction about our firm. Very briefly, uh, believe it or not, we're a management consulting firm that specializes in the municipal waste and recycling sector, so our clients are, local governments, cities, counties, authorities, uh, anybody that's providing a range of collection, disposal, recycling, services and/or owns or operates facilities, whether landfills, transfer stations, recycling facilities, so this, this really is our area of specialization, and, uh, it's been a fascinating industry, industry to be in, that's going through some pretty interesting times right now. Number one, with the virus, we've seen a huge shift of the amount of waste and recycling generated in the residential sector, because we're now at homes, and that's caused some issues with quite a number of our clients, uh, and on a more broad and global level, uh, the recycling industry, which, you know, has been around for years and years, uh, a number of things have conspired to make recycling, um, uh, I won't say, um, well, more challenging, um, those of you familiar with the Amazon Prime Effect, people, now they're living at home, now they're ordering things, they got a lot more cardboard boxes coming in, um, you also have things like lightweighting of bottles, you know, and, you, you're trying to recover bottles and cans, but now there's less material, so it's just gotten sort of economically more challenging, so there are a number of issues that have just been in the industry, and I, I digress a little bit, but, we provide a full range, if it's not engineering, uh, if it's financial, if it's procurement related, if it's planning related, uh, those are our areas of specialization. And my colleagues and staff come from both private and public sector, uh, and organizations in the industry, uh, so we just try to bring together a lot of expertise to help, uh, counties, uh, establish transparent, fair, thoughtful solid waste management systems, so that's a quick intro, next slide, please. Guess I gotta break in there, so just, you know, I'm gonna try to go through this pretty quick, I'm, I'm on a little bit later, and, and I think, uh, folks probably want to move through pretty good, have a couple of slides just to summarize your system, um, you know, Liberty County is, uh, you've got a really important asset, you've got a solid waste transfer station. Philosophically, we're big proponents of, uh, governmental entities owning solid waste facilities, because, um, it's a great service for the community, it's a fantastic asset, because it gives you greater control in managing your waste streams, so that, that's a really good, a good position to be in, to have that facility up and running. For the most part, uh, the county's serving its unincorporated area residential sector through its convenience centers. However, in the past number of years, the county's gotten into what we would call a residential curbside service, and that's here, uh, you'll, you'll see a picture of the Polycart collection. So that's being provided in the county, and of course, you've got incorporated cities that are also providing various, uh, types of service to their residents. So it's kind of a, a, a complex system, because there are multiple entities providing different services, uh, next slide, please. So there's just a, a quick map of those unincorporated convenience centers, um, you know, and those take capital investment. Mr. Long talked earlier about some planned capital investment, one of the important components of the solid waste management system is planning ahead to be able to, uh, expand, maintain, develop the network of facilities that the county has, and anytime you're in the collection business, you need to have a vehicle replacement plan, uh, those heavy-duty garbage trucks that you use for residential, commercial collection, you know, they've got a, a finite life, and so you want to maximize your usage, usage of those utilities, uh, and then plan to replace those, so that you're always able to provide service and get those vehicles out on the street. Next slide, please. So, uh, as was alluded to a moment ago, uh, we actually established the overall, um, uh, service structure and then revenue structure, uh, a number of years ago, and so this represents an update. And, uh, I, I won't, I won't read the slide, but I think the point that I would make is, from early on, the, uh, philosophy that was communicated to us as the consultant is that it was very important in Liberty County to come up with a combination of revenue mechanisms that were, uh, um, very fair to all the customers, uh, and reasonably transparent, so that you could look at however you're being charged for the county to provide very important solid waste utility services, you know, that those amounts were apportioned in a fair and equitable manner to both residential and commercial customers, to the county unincorporated areas, as well as to the incorporated cities, and I think that, I, I have to say, we do solid waste, cost of service and rate studies for cities and counties all over the country, uh, and, and I, I have always been impressed with the focus on being fair and equitable in Liberty County, and so I think that's really, you know, what we've tried to do, uh, we had a good model to do that from our prior work, and we were able to essentially, uh, leverage that and update that, factoring in new growth. So we know that there are quite a number of households coming on in the city of Flemington, so we've got a plan to accommodate those houses. We know that we had capital upgrades needed on a number of the convenience centers, the, the Isle of Wight Center is the one that jumps to my mind, is having quite significant need for capital investment to improve that, and I just want to let everybody know that part of our methodology is to capture those capital improvements, um, I, I have, you know, very strong praise for, solid waste authority staff that helped us gather the customer data, the financial data, the route data, uh, all of the operational information that we need to go through and build a sort of a bottom-up cost of service estimate to verify the validity of those rates. Next slide. And so with that, I'm just gonna go right into where we ended up. First, a little bit of history, uh, Liberty County has been able to provide its services without regular rate increases, with one exception, you have a transfer station, and the county has a contract for transporting and disposing of waste, and that contract has an annual escalator in it. So it is common and routine for the tip fee at that transfer station has been increased year to year, that's very standard in the waste industry. Essentially, you can look at almost any contract for disposal, transportation disposal, recycling, you'll see that escalator. But the county has done, I think, a commendable job at providing services and keeping rates low and not raising rates on a routine basis. And so it's been, I believe, five years, and, uh, somebody would correct me if I, if I missed that by a year or two, but the broad range of rates that are used to generate revenue have been able to stay flat, which I think has been a huge benefit for both residential and commercial customers in the county. But I mentioned some of those capital investments, it's been five years since we've had a rate increase, so really, the county was due to factor in those future, uh, the future capital investment needs, the population growth that's occurring, and the fact that there have not been, uh, rate increases on the solid waste assessment, or on some of the commercial dumpster collection, I didn't have a picture of that. So it was a good time to really dig into the nuts and bolts, uh, of the overall solid waste authority, uh, and, and go through the rate structure, and really look critically at how can the authority remain fair, financially healthy and sustainable, uh, for the long term, to accommodate what is clearly, you know, going to continue to be a growing county, folks coming in, uh, and just frankly being ready to handle, uh, the peaks and valleys of the global recycling market and, and things that, you know, that happen to your system. So basically, um, I've got a series of slides, I'm gonna try to go through and just touch on what revenue mech, mechanisms are in use, and, uh, what we're recommending, uh, at this point in time. So, um, let me go to the next slide, please. So I'm gonna start with the transfer station. Virtually all of the waste that's collected in the county is going through the county transfer station, and if that waste is delivered by a city or by a commercial entity, then the county is charging a tip fee, dollar per ton, for every ton of waste coming through, so then the county has to aggregate into a trailer and then pay a contractor to transport and dispose of it. So that tip fee, uh, you know, it's very important, it covers all those services, and so, um, current tip fees just pennies over forty-five dollars a ton. We are looking, again, at, at the con, contracted expected growth, uh, we are recommending a three percent rate increase on that tip fee for the first year, so that's the top table. Uh, and then the second thing I want to show, so for each kind of, uh, type of, of revenue, I want to show you the current year recommend, the detail of the current year, uh, rate recommendation, and then what does the five-year path look like. So at the bottom table, what you'll see is that we are recommending, consistent with the underlying contract for transfer and disposal, that that tip fee be escalated very, you know, very modestly to keep track with the underlying contract expense. Uh, and so what this is gonna do is let the county continue to operate the transfer station and pay its contractor to, uh, environmentally responsibly transfer and dispose the waste materials generated in the county from residential and commercial customers. And so that, again, that's the transfer station per ton tip fee. Next slide, please. All right, so one of the coolest things about Liberty County and about its solid waste system is the fact that the county provides its convenience centers and provides recycling and has to keep Liberty beautiful, and all of the incorporated municipalities also provide some or a few or many of those same services, maybe in a different manner, maybe they have curbside collection. So the solid waste assessment is the, uh, main revenue mechanism that was created to recover the authority's cost for all of the unincorporated, uh, services it provides, as well as services that any of the incorporated cities don't provide. And so the reason I bring this up is because if you look at the. And so the reason I bring this up is because if you look at the current, so we've got all of the incorporated communities listed, and we've got the county unincorporated area, and we've got an area it's called on this slide, Curbside Riceboro Rural. That's actually an area of the unincorporated county that because of its geographic location is getting a curbside service. It's actually getting a higher level of service. And again, you see that there are different current rates. Those rates are all in our financial model aligned with the services that each incorporated city is getting. And that's, you know, again, from day one, that was also an objective. And that's why you see different assessment levels because some cities, if you're providing, for example, in Heinsville, you're, the city's already providing curbside collection. So Heinsville doesn't consume as much of the county unincorporated service. Whereas, I'll use the community of Gum Branch, which doesn't have curbside collection. So its residents are coming and using the county system. So this assessment rate structure is intended to recover the costs equitably in residence and wherever they happen to live in the county. So let me get to, you can see the top table is the detailed recommendation for a current year rate increase. And what we realized as we were going through some of the cost of service, we do have some differential increases in terms of what we're recommending. And this is just driven from the impact of updating all of the projections for capital investment and for growth. And so we've got a different recommendation in the current year, ranging from three percent up to six percent. And then we've got a couple of quirky things. I'll point out Flemington historically has had an agreement where the cost of serving Flemington was covered directly by the city writing a check to the county. And I trust somebody will, if I say this wrong, they'll, they'll correct me. And so one of the things that we factored into this update is the conversion of Flemington residential households to actually be charged the assessment. And that gets the city of Flemington out of the middle and just lets their residents cover the cost of their services through the assessment. So that's a little bit of a, there's some component of that. But then the second thing I'll mention, I mentioned earlier, significant expected growth in that number of households. And one of the important parts of collaborating on the full cost was talking with staff and anticipating what it would take to serve those additional households with a curbside service. And so you'll see there's a little bit higher rate to cover this expected growth in Flemington because of the operating impacts that that will place on the authority. And again, this just comes back to trying to fairly charge all the jurisdictions and their residents based on what it costs to provide services to those residents. So the top table, a lot of stuff going on there. I should point out, I believe you may have a very detailed, very detailed exhibit that shows a whole bunch of rates. It's got commercial dumpster rates, which I'm gonna get to in a minute. It's gonna have these assessment rates, it's gonna have the fee rates. Is that correct?
We didn't furnish, we have not furnished the embedded CIP material, if that's what you're talking about.
No, I'm just talking about the summary exhibits. If we haven't, I will make sure that.
No, but we can, we can share those.
Yeah, okay, we haven't done that.
Oh, no, not the detailed charts.
Well, we have a very detailed chart that shows all these rates each year as well. I've actually, believe it or not, just summarized some of them for purposes of this presentation. And so having made a first year adjustment that is differential depending on the community, the second component of our rate recommendation for the solid waste assessment, and this goes to the fact that some of these big capital investments come on in two years, is that we have a recommendation to have an across-the-board increase of the assessment of five percent out in the 2023 timeframe. So we've tried to keep things flat. You could go a couple of different ways on this rate path. Again, recommendation, just because you only have to change rates once this year and once in 2023, you could stair step the rates up a little bit, you know, maybe you go two and a half, two and a half, something along those lines. So that, you know, that would be something to consider. But the recommendation to align rate changes with when the bigger expenses start hitting the books is to do a second rate increase across the board of five percent. Next slide, please. So commercial service fees, this is a lot of numbers. I don't expect anybody to follow every number. But what these matrices show is that the county provides commercial collection, and that's via dumpsters. And those dumpsters come in different sizes. So if you look down the left, there's two, four, six, and eight yard dumpsters. And you can actually, depending on how much trash or potentially cardboard a business generates, you might have to go to that container once a week or five times a week. And so we have a very robust cost model that estimates, you know, that determines the cost for dumpster service. All told, there are slightly different changes depending on the size of dumpster that links to the disposal cost. These are somewhere between three and eight percent increases depending on the container size, and that links back to disposal. But let me just jump to the next slide because having done those, what you'll see is, here's a summary, you can see the percentage summary based on the size of the container. You know, eight percent for the smaller, in fact, the smaller the container, the bigger the rate increase because a lot of the new changes we made to the model, the collection cost is increasing. So, and we actually have an adjustment on the Polycart refuse that we had, I think, overlooked in an earlier version of the model. And so you'll see, again, we've really tried to keep this notion of charging for what the service actually costs. And because of the disruptions to the recycling market, that bottom row that says eight yard OCC, OCC stands for old corrugated cardboard. That has gotten more expensive because revenues have gone down. And so that's why you're seeing a bigger increase on recycling collection. But that's still a lower cost than trash collection. So it gives an incentive for businesses that generate a lot of recycling to continue recycling that material, which is, you know, it's what you want because you still can move that, turn that into more cardboard. And you'll see, again, the recommendation for a five percent across-the-board increase on commercial rates in 2023. Next slide, please. There are a couple of other rates that I'll mention. The first is a roll-off service. If you're doing a construction project, you have that great big box that sits there that they fill up with the, you know, two-by-fours and drywall and brick and block. That's served by a roll-off truck, that a truck comes and pulls that whole container and rolls the container on the truck and takes it away. There's a, the way that that service is charged is on a per pull basis. And we realized that we needed to increase the cost of that pull. I think that's still quite competitive for that service. I think if you went around the area, I think the county would be very competitive with that charge, even though it's an eleven percent recommended increase. And then there's some sort of specialized charges for tire handling and also for citizens that need extra Polycarts. So we looked at all those as well. Next slide, please. All right, so here to me is a really important outcome and a primary consideration. I apologize, these numbers and lines are a little bit small. But there are two, two financial measures that we always want to look at, that we wanted to share with you. And so the top line is essentially the solid waste annual operating surplus. Obviously, we're trying to be financially sustainable. We're trying to be fully enterprise funded. We want the combination of assessments, tip fees, and commercial service rates to fully fund the cost of the operation. And consequently, we don't ever want to end up with no cash or negative cash at the end of the year. So the top line, you'll see, we're trying to keep just above zero so that we're fully funded. And so that's, that's what the top line shows. Depending on the timing of capital investment, it fluctuates up and down. But we've, we've achieved one of our goals of, let's make, let's make sure we're, you know, in a surplus. We're never dipping into or having to, you know, dip into the general fund. And actually, that's the lower line. So it turns out, many years ago, before the county established its assessment, the solid waste fund struggled and had to actually take loans from the general fund. And the general fund debt that was taken on to the solid waste authority has been in existence, I actually don't know how long, but I believe for more than two decades. The solid waste authority has actually owed the general fund. And so the final consideration that we've made in formulating the financial plan for the solid waste authority is to have a very slow but consistent payback of that general fund debt so that we're not burdening current rate payers with obligations incurred by rate payers, you know, two decades ago. But to be financially responsible as an enterprise organization. And so the bottom line, right now, we're just under a million dollars, believe it or not, are still owed by the solid waste authority to the general fund. And we're just trying to chip away at that over time. And again, that, these are all the different things that we're trying to balance to provide the service, to fund the system and to meet the financial obligations in a way that is as fair as we, we think we can come up with. So I'd like to share that those are some of the objectives that, that we're really trying to target as we're formulating the rates and the financial plan for waste management and recycling, which, as you know, it's, it's a critical utility service, water, sewer, electric, waste management. I mean, those are the key ones that, you know, that the local governments are providing and that citizens need and businesses need. So trying to do that as best we can. Next slide, please. So I've been talking a bunch, I hope that was fairly quick. We have some pretty straightforward recommendations for your consideration. We are essentially, I always characterize this as consultant recommendation because I look at our role as to inform and advise, answer questions and kind of give, hey, we, we've really given this a detailed professional look, and we think this is gonna be a good outcome for, for you, our clients. We do recommend adoption of the rate proposal. So there is gonna be some increases the current year and then maybe one in two years. We also support the notion of converting Flemington's revenue mechanism from a check written from the city to the county. Let's just put them on the assessment because we've got that assessment system working, might as well use it. And then really, the bottom two are pretty standard rule of thumb. Having developed a financial model, let's just keep checking that, you know, just prudent financial management that anybody, any business, any household honestly should be looking at their financial performance on a routine basis. And we think the five-year cycle has been good. That seems to be, if they're gonna be, you know, if there's any major disruptions, obviously, you might want to revisit. But certainly, a five-year cycle's worked well. And, you know, we didn't put it up here, and that's probably gonna, I think we missed our chance, but I think there was some move afoot to rename one of the convenience centers, the Patrick D. Bowen Memorial. Well, how about that? Sorry, I couldn't help myself. In any case, I appreciate your attention. There's a lot of detail here. You know, it's interesting, conceptually, trash and recycling, pretty straightforward. But when you really get into the details of it, there are a lot of things going on. But again, I, I think the county has established an effective, fair plan for handling this. And I'd be happy to field any questions or discuss any things that aren't clear, debate other directions. So thank you for your, for your attention.
My question is, as it relates to Flemington, have we had that discussion with the mayor and council?
Oh, yes, sir. In fact, the next item on your agenda, if you remember, is a carry forward from the last meeting for the Flemington contract to do that. I guess just a couple of notes to be real quick. Timing on this is end of year, I understand. But the assessments, if there's showing to be a change in the assessments, any change in the assessments, additions, deletions, whatever it's gonna be, those are billed, those have to go out on the, tax notices when they go out on the assessments. And so it is critical that we try to adopt as soon as we can these. I think the hope was we would do it tonight. It's a lot of information, I realize that. I would tell you, the very, very last chance we need to have to do that would be in January. Would be your first meeting in January. But we'd be happy, I think, the staff's here, solid waste staff's here and everything. But, you know, that is, that is the timing of these. They really need to go in as soon as they can.
Yes, sir.
The closure of all of our landfills, what contribution comes from these other little cities? I know we don't have any out there now, but has any contribution come from those in the past?
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir. It's built into the rate model. In fact, in that table that he showed, some of the varying rates, in fact, City of Heinsville's a perfect example. The city provides their own collection mechanism and all that. So the City of Heinsville residents don't pay that portion, so they pay a different rate fee. But yet, as City of Heinsville residents, we are still assessed a closed landfill fee or a closure fee because we do have to book that and do have to make certain modifications to the landfill, even though it's closed, and monitor that site. And so short answer to that question is yes, sir. Those are built into everybody's rate model.
But, but these smaller cities, that used to be smaller cities, the way the chairman just spoke of, you know, they're growing. And in fact, there's probably more residents in that area than there, you know. I know more than Gum Branch and more than the, it's grown in the Riceboro area. So, you know, what do we do in charging them the same amount? Or are we?
We're, well, no, sir. So, so if we dig into the model, first for, first for the closed landfill, everybody pays across the board for closed landfill. It's built into whether it's a commercial or whether it's residential. There's a component of that closed landfill fee that's, that's factored in there to pay, along with like Clean and Beautiful. So there are certain components that everybody's gonna pay a piece of. The, if you look at the fee structure that's proposed on the Flemington, and I think John mentioned that, that, that rate changes by about two dollars and forty-two cents a month on average. Realizing these are billed for a year, so it's like twenty-nine oh-three a year. They, they see the largest change in their assessment because of that growth. And then they, they see also, along with everybody else, another change in that assessment coming as we monitor those, those subdivisions being fully built out. I tell you, the other thing that they, they also, a particular for them, and this shows, I guess, just how deep we dug and the staff dug into that, is to even talk about how we're being servicing those accounts now with the new cul-de-sacs that are in those smaller subdivision areas. We've got to go ahead and make plans. We've been, we've been using a one-man operation called a corrotta can that goes in front of the front load trucks. And that has worked well on the larger working environments. But as you get down into those more tightly built subdivisions, the manipulation of that machine just can't happen. And so we're having to look at another type machine that's gonna be bought, that's gonna handle those, those small subdivisions. And I realize it, it can be used other places too. But in taking that into consideration, the purchase of that machine also gets reflected in Flemington's model. So they are seeing the largest increase. And yes, sir, I knew that was a concern. We reemphasized on our last conference call we had and have taken all those things into consideration in that Flemington contract.
So that's consideration as far as more employees on the truck then?
Well, you know, we don't use, we, we, we don't envision, at least in this model, switching over to a two-man rear loader truck. I think what we're looking at, Commissioner Walden, would be something similar to a smaller type compact unit that's more like a sidearm, small sidearm bandit or a small internal use component truck rather than, rather than doubling up on the manpower requirement to service Flemington. Unlike City of Heinsville, who, who, because it's, because they have a lot more density in the population, a lot more of those small street environments to work their route faster, what they've done is they go to a rear loader truck with two men, actually, three men, including the driver, two men to get off and service both sides of the street at one time. We don't have enough small residential areas that we service to warrant going to a three-man system in a rear load truck. I think we're, we're better to try to stick with a smaller compact unit to, to, to service a sidearm.
Well, I mean, I think we need to be looking down the road because once they go in them cul-de-sacs, you just hit the nail on the head. There are gonna be people parking in the cul-de-sac, and the driver's gonna have to get out and start dragging that Polycart or whatever you wanna call it over there to the back of the truck. And that is coming because you go into some of them now, Joey, you can't, you can't even turn around so that, which is gonna require a vehicle backing in there.
No, I, I, I agree, and that's something we can, that's something we can certainly look at.
Well, I, I'm just, you know, I, I, I know they come down a straight street over here, Martin Road is straight from the dead end, you know, all the way to Lakeview. And I mean, it's, you know, you've got two people working each side of the street. But I think you need to really be looking at this thing. I mean, I, I know the larger cities is something that, and the growth is important. But we're gonna be the one bearing the cost because I can tell you, if I'm, if I'm sitting there in that subdivision and my garbage don't get picked up, it's gonna be hard for somebody to explain to me. and my garbage don't get picked up, it's going to be hard for somebody to explain to me that the driver couldn't get to the poly cart while somebody's 69 Mustang was parked in the cul-de-sac.
Understand, yeah, we, I, I think, I think we'll be okay where we are. I mean, obviously if we go to a rear load with three people, we've increased the cost a lot for a minimal-use vehicle that we would use only in that area. So I think, given, given that a look inside the five-year period i- is good and I think there are some other options, you know, that we can look at other than that, that rear load, three-man operation too. So, and, and I will say this, yeah, I will say this, in Flemington's contract, there is a provision in there, even at this fee, we make no guarantee that this fee is for five years, that it can, can be adjusted from time to time as necessary for maintenance arrangements, so even in the next year or two, if that decision was made by the board to switch to a rear load type operation, we could make adjustments in Flemington's contract and adjust the rate again. And if, if I may, sorry.
I'm glad that we're looking down the road and part of that looking down the road is we may need to get out of the garbage business and maybe do something in the landfill and the, and the transfer station, but, you know, there's a lot of wear and tear on those things, so I just, it's going to be very expensive with, with that growth unless somebody bears nearly 90% of the cost. I don't want it to be taxpayers.
No, sir, and I, and I tell you what will really help, I made a note here, we can come back and the, we, we get as much in the weeds as we need to get, but I think, I think it's real helpful if you see, even if you glance at it for five minutes and decide to set it aside, the graph and everything that was used to project that five-year capital and employment and the convenience center expansions that you asked for, it's not just limited to one. We forecast down the road in the next five years to do the expansions that are necessary on all of them and we phase those in in years. And so all that's built into the model, I think it would help you to see the CIP spreadsheet and the labor spreadsheet for, for equipment and convenience center expansion.
Well, that's great for what we see right now, but we need to all understand, and I think some folks know and some folks don't, but Flemington goes from Port Stewart to the railroad tracks in McIntosh, okay? I mean, that's, what, you can look at it as the city limits is a part of it, but it goes that area and all of that in there is going to be full of houses in a five-year period. So we need to, you know, I, I just want to make sure that we getting everything we can possibly get. I, I'm not in favor of going in there to the little cities and trying to run them, but I know they need a little help right now, but there's also something they can add that's called tactics and, and fund their own, so that's all I got to say about it.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate it, I, I think, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Walden, but also, let me, let me say this, I, I think initially, whenever we had the conversation, we were talking about taking a look in December. It's, it's pretty detailed, I, I, and from my understanding, originally we were concerned about Flemington paying their fair rate. In, in looking through this briefly, like you said, for five minutes, I mean, it's, it shows that they're, they're paying their percentage and again, it's fair. If, if we're not losing, then we winning, you know, that, I mean, that's how I look at business, even personal business. If, if I'm not coming out my pocket to keep these lights on and the people walking through my doors are helping do that, I'm not losing. And just, just looking at, at this and at the rates, we're not losing. And then also, you know, from, from the legal standpoint where we have an opportunity, if we have to come back before these five years and make adjustment, it is what it is, you know. And, and I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Walden, ev- every year, whenever I get my, my, my tax, my letter from, from the other Mr. Jones, you know, I, I put it to the side for a couple of days because I don't want to open it, but eventually I have to open it and then it is what it is, you know. But also I understand the, the, the type of services that, you know, the citizens, the constituents that I represent, especially with, with my district being one of the, well, and Commissioner Walden, my district being totally inside of Hinesville. So I, I understand whenever I look at my taxes and then I walk outside and then see the great job, the, the one team from, from Commissioner Gillard that they do, I never have to worry about them missing my trash, you know, the water system and everything. It's so, so a- as, as citizens, and of course that comes from, from our standpoint too, the more we can educate them to understand where, where their money goes, I, I think it, it'll help as well. But, you know, some people complain about taxes in, in Hinesville, but the, the type of services that we get for that, I mean, it, it's, it's hard to, to beat it. And just like you said, looking at, at this, just for the five minutes I did, it, it looks like it's fair across the board. And then we, we have an option to go back if we have to, even if we have to, to make some adjustments. I, I think everyone and all the parties agree. So with that saying, do we really need to relook the, the contract or, or are you looking for a motion?
What we do have is a separate item, it's a contract because it'll change the way that, it'll basically, it's a contract with the county to put the assessments on the bills.
Right.
Will be the next item, yes, sir. So, so we, we really, you know, either.
This is the fee schedule.
This is, this is the fee schedule and the rates for commercial operations. Yes, sir, and, and, and you know, just as a note, real quickly, is that, so, so just to be sure everybody understands what they're seeing, not in this room necessarily, but on Facebook, is that actual change is a per-year change. So when you're talking $9.84, most people pay their bills on the month, you're talking 82 cent a month, basically, and then in some cases a nickel a month. So, so I do, going back to what John said, it's always been the board's desire to have something fair and reasonable and I think that's what you see, but yet it plans for the future in detail.
And as they were saying, is this staff recommendation?
It is a staff recommendation.
All right, this is staff recommendation.
Joey, let me mention something.
Loud and proud too.
You know, this is not something about us beating up a smaller city, but I've just heard a conversation 45 minutes ago from Commissioner Gillard talking about, you know, we street, uh, sweeping streets and we can't even sweep the streets that we've already paved in some of these areas and here we go into another city. I just want to make sure that we're being fair with everybody about it, I mean, the cost is going to be the cost. And I just believe that we may be, you know, overburdening some of those folks in that road department with, with other jobs. I mean, any way we look at it, you know, they're going to be working for Clinton, either in the road department or either down there at Solid Waste. So if you feel comfortable about it, then I'll support you on it, but just remember that I'm going to be the one back in the office.
Well, I'm, I'm going to look to my right this time, is this staff's recommendation?
And he's, and.
He's saying yes again, Commissioner Walden.
Too, by the way, now too.
Including Mr. Wells is shaking his head too, so. Chairman, turn the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question, are you going to go ahead and take the motion?
Is that second?
Mr. Chairman, and I just, you know, and I approve of this, but I wanted to make sure, does this increase, include the renovations or expansion of the convenience centers?
It does, yes, ma'am, by detail.
Everything is in here.
Yeah, and I, and, yeah, and I think it would be great, again, I made a note, I think a couple, couple of things, just real quickly, we need to anyway, is I'll ask Trent and his engineering report in the month of January to bring those slides in here.
He did last month, I got it at my office, I just didn't bring it, he gave us the spreadsheet of how much it was going to take to do the expansion.
Yes, yes.
I seen that, but this, that, that class would be included in the five-year period? That we would be able to have those convenience centers redid, okay?
All, all the increased percentages are.
Okay.
Does that sweeten the deal, Commissioner?
As is.
Do you have, do you have a motion?
We have a, we have a second, we just.
It's the discussion period.
I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you, thank you. Let's move on with it.
All in favor, raise your right hand. It was opposed. All in favor, raise your right hand, I, I say yea.
Say yea, Eddie.
I got my name, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay, all right, good, all right. Yes, sir, we got it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good, good job, we look forward to that.
Thank you, John. And, and, and Mr. Chairman, the next item is that intergubernal agreement that you looked at last time for the provision of residential Solaway services, and I want to say, or, or, you know, reemphasize again for Commissioner Walden because it was a good point, we, we did since the last meeting and that concern was expressed over Flemington, we went back to make sure we had, had covered everything on the Flemington side. It's not a new contract with Flemington, it's just a cha- a change contract in the fact that now the people themselves will pay it on the assessment and Flemington won't pay it for them. So, so it's, it's really not a new contract, but in saying that, that is where we did go back and retool to look at extra equipment, extra men and those things that are going to be required, at least from what we can see in the crystal ball and looking at the growth right now down there, the projected build-out. And again, it does reserve the right in here in text to, to go back any subsequent year and change that.
All right, Chairman, turn the motion.
A move.
Second.
Second motion, second, we approve the contract, Flemington from Solid Waste. Pick up any further discussion on that? All in favor, either say aye or raise your right hand.
Aye.
All right, motion passes, thank you.
Hey, John, you, you say you've been in the solid waste o- over here. Yeah, you've been in the solid waste business for a while, do, do you know Tony Soprano? Hey, don't worry about it.
Last item, date fund request.
We had a, a, a date fund request from Fraser Counseling Center. I believe you have a copy of that, the dollar amount requested is $3,000. The actual amount that's available in there exceeds that, there's about $18,000 in the account right now. So they do meet the specified purpose for the use and it would be up to the board. They, they have been used before.
They have.
To do that and they do have to submit a, a final report before they can draw the remainder of the funds out. We'll draw it out in two pieces for them.
And Audrey finds them in compliance?
Yes, sir.
All right. Chairman, turn the motion.
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman, make a motion, we approve the 3,000 request for the date funds to Fraser Center.
Motion, second, we approve the request from the Fraser Center in honor of the late and revered Dr. Whitman Fraser, my friend. Any further discussion?
Just, just one, Mr. Chairman, now, Joey, when.
Joey, was that application put in on time?
Well, there's not a application deadline for the date funds.
Not for the date fund.
Yeah.
There, there's, those, those are an ongoing application as funds become available. And so, but yes, sir, there, there's, there's really no deadline for those funds that the board's established.
That, that was my question, I, I know when the committee.
We start getting those applications, let's make sure they're on time. If they're not on time, you know, let's, let's defer and go to somebody else, okay?
Ten-four.
I don't, I don't agree with sitting around waiting to give somebody the money, let's just go ahead and move it somewhere else.
What we have done in the past is just open up to any agency that qualifies.
Yes, sir, it stays open year-round. It's a, it's a, they stay open year-round, it's just up to agencies, you know, their specific use of those funds. There's only certain activities that would, so they're allowed to put in any time during the 12-month period, subject to the funds.
And, and, I remember a couple of years back, we made sure that we never dispersed all the, the money out of there, right?
Well, so, so that's the 18 that's left, you, you, you set a policy years ago that some of those date funds go automatically to the accountability courts.
Right.
They came and asked you for that, so this is the money that's available for disbursement to other agencies. We, we do that set aside automatically, yes.
Right, but I can't remember, what was the percentage we set? Because remember, we did set something.
Percentage or was it an amount?
Or amount.
It was more of an amount, it was more of an amount than percentage.
I think it was a 5,000, as far as a limit as to how much they could.
No, no, I, I, I could have.
How much we would leave in the account?
Okay.
You can just email us that, Joey, if you will.
Right, yeah, yeah. I will, I'll email you.
That's what I was going to say, I didn't want to get in the weeds.
Yes, sir, I will, I'll do that.
I, I remember because.
Yeah, there was, we did put some.
Right. You know, I'm getting old, but.
Administrative report, I'm sorry.
We need to vote on it?
We did, Thrift, Thrift made the motion, Stevens made the second and then you voted.
I thought we did.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to make sure I have my hands up and nobody never.
Really? Well, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, here we go, in case we.
We got it, Ms. Madge.
Uh, real quick, the administrative report, Head Start pre-con meeting was today, went very well with the project team. They have tentatively set a groundbreaking date for that facility for January 29th at, at 11 o'clock. That gives the contractor time to get on the site, clear the site some, get some power to the site and do all that. So I wanted, I wanted to give you that, we'll confirm that. But he feels like he can meet the requirements to get everything cleared by then to do that.
Talking about clearing the whole site.
If he missed the first deadline, y'all already know what time it is.
Is that talking about clearing the whole site?
No, sir, no, sir.
Just enough to get in there and do a groundbreaking?
Well, he's actually, you know, because Christmas now, the contract's awarded, it's signed and everything, so he, he probably doesn't really kick off until the 4th of January and he'll go in there and mobilize, get into the detail, but do, do a lot of soul, he's got, he put up his BMPs and everything for soul work before he can even start clearing, so he probably doesn't start clearing until the 11th.
Well, it's one, it's one thing for sure, he don't, he doesn't have any large movements out there, it's just.
He, he doesn't and, and the soul's real good, so he should, he should be pretty good. So, you know, we'll come back with a definitive date for your calendar there. Primarily, Mr. Chairman, I believe that was really the only thing I wanted to mention to you.
What about the fire station?
Oh, if you want to go ahead and talk about a fire station ribbon-cutting date in January.
I have to look, look at my schedule.
All right, look at your calendar and then we'll, Mr. Brown, Chairman, we can wait to give them, we can give them a chance to, when can y'all look at it?
Look at the, so he and Commissioner-elect Jones on the same shift, so.
Yes, sir, we, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Give us some dates to look at.
Luckily, they, they furnished that to us, so we, we, we'll be glad to do that.
Are they off on Fridays?
You, you want to shoot for Friday?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, tentatively, I'm, I'm off on the 29th.
Yeah, and that's Head Start.
Oh, yeah, that's Head Start.
That's Head Start and, and we saw that, I looked at that because I got y'all's calendars right here, so y'all are, y'all are off then.
So the 22nd.
22nd, you're on PM.
What about the 15th?
I mean, you could do the morning.
I, I get off that morning.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I.
What about the 15th, Jeff? What about the 15th?
Day shift.
Yeah, he's on AM on the day shift.
I have a good day on Friday, Mr. Chairman, or is that just a good day?
Yes, I prefer.
It'll be whatever time y'all want to do it on the.
I mean, the 22nd will be okay, I mean, I get off that morning, so.
22nd will be okay?
Okay.
Let's do, go for 22nd.
You, you want to shoot, you want to shoot for, you tell me 11, 11, 2, earlier or better? I mean, so that you can be done or.
I, I expect you to be there.
To which, to which sounds really good.
Can certainly do that.
If y'all could do 2, glad to give me time to take a nap.
2 o'clock on the 22nd?
2 o'clock.
Okay.
That's in the middle of the day.
Oh, you napping during that time?
See, I thought you might want to get off and keep running.
That's fine, we can do it earlier.
Be done with that and then 10, something like, can we do 10?
That's up, absolutely.
That's fine, too.
10 o'clock.
22nd, right?
That one went over.
22nd at 10 and then 29th at 11.
That's fine.
Your reminder.
That's cool.
All right, and we, and we will remind you too there. The website's going to be kicked off, it'll go live over the weekend sometime when it energizes, so y'all, please take a look at that. And you do have an employee appeal hearing we need to conduct, we'll try, if it's okay with the board, we'll try to conduct that prior to the 21st meeting in January.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Brown, you finished?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Just got, I know, we talked about it briefly, just where are we at with the sailboat?
Well, it's, it's, we, we, we went ahead and submitted what we had to submit and we have not heard back yet. We won't hear back from that until about February, 21, and then if we hear back that it's, that they do like the application, we've got to submit a second app that'll go in there. And so that, that activity, even if it's approved, would be like a, a 2022.
Well, i- isn't that, that group was supposed to submit something back to this board also? Well, isn't that, that group was supposed to submit something back to this board also?
Well, I think what the board said is go forward with the application with the understanding that the activity wouldn't be approved if the grant was even approved. The activity wouldn't be approved by the board until the traffic study was done. Yes, sir. So we're way away from, we don't even know whether DNR is going to really want to move on it.
And also the redesigning of this podium.
Redesign, re, well, the redesign is, is already been submitted, so if you remember, there was a 90-day lead-up period to that for the work schedule and that should kick off now in January.
Okay, I'm going to make sure I get it done before this COVID is over because Mr. Fraser is going to be right back in my face.
Absolutely. We're tracking all those things.
Mr. Gillard, you good down there?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We still haven't set a date for our annual meeting?
I didn't know whether you wanted to, you know, I thought about that tonight, but we may want to wait until Mr. Jones is in here.
Okay.
And that way, if we do it in January, when he's in here, then that way...
Okay.
I mean, that was just my thought.
That's fine, that's fine.
That's respectful.
Joey, is there any news on the census?
No news, I mean, basically.
I mean, because, and I, I was just looking at, at, I know the district lines are going to have to move. I, I mean, you know, especially, especially in Heinzville with all that off of Airport Road and Griffin Park and all that, it's, it's going to change. I was looking at my district in the Heinzville area. I got the same amount of land, but...
More people.
But a lot less people. I, I mean, I, I could, yeah, a lot less people in, in, like over there in my old neighborhood.
Yeah.
It's more spread out.
Yeah, there's nobody over there.
Cherry Memorial.
I mean, nobody. Cherry Memorial, I mean, people have passed, so you got the land, you just don't have the people, so the line is going to have to move.
Yeah.
For census, you know, for the count. And Conne's district, you know, includes...
This explodes.
Griffin Park, which is a town. 4,000 people, it's 4,000 people in there, just in Griffin Park. And then Conne has Pine Ridge, you know, another 2,000 people, so that's...
Independent.
You know, all, all, all of that, yeah, all of that, so that, the lines are going to have to move. But anyhow, and I, just, just, I just want to know...
Well, so what I'll do, we'll, we'll reach out and kind of, because it's been a shifting thing because of the COVID and the census got pushed back and some of those things, we'll go back and look and see if there's a redone schedule now, projected schedule. If you remember, the, the president certifies, it was supposed to do it in January, I would think now, that's probably six months later.
Right.
If in the theory it follows that pattern.
Yeah, I just wanted to know.
Yes, sir, and so we'll get a, we'll, we'll get a schedule for you there.
Okay, and the last thing, Ms. Chairman, for my commissioners to the, to your right, next year, they'll be the ones that make the board appointments and I, I could just only hope that they learn something the last 365 days, that they don't have to keep postponing and this and that and the other, just, just do it. I mean, that's what we did every time till you left, you know, so just...
We did a little investigation.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brown.
Yeah. Joey.
Yes, sir.
This is going to be your first time, you're, you're coming.
I heard Commissioner Gillard, he's talking about the name of the district.
Boom!
Yes, sir, what'll happen, well, what'll happen, after the census is certified, then information, there's, there's actually, when I remember, a period of time when some other stuff takes place. And then basically the census block data file is submitted to each county and, or is prepared and submitted to each county, then we get a look at how many people actually reside and the composition of those people in each current district and then there's a mandate to balance those and so that, that's why those will definitely change.
Be some shift.
And, and if you remember, Commissioner Walden, what happens then is you have a period of time that you've got to submit a rebalancing plan to, Secretary of State, but you, to reapportionment, basically reapportionment committee. And so you, the Board of Education, since your district lines are the same, will start to meet, to look at those block files and try to balance those and then if you fail to submit to reapportionment by deadline, they then take it and they balance it for you.
They do it themselves.
Right.
I remember.
Okay.
Well, Commissioner Gillard and I, we were riding the other day and he told me to go all the way to the coast.
It wasn't?
Yeah, so, so that'll be a whole process in itself that will materialize or at least start to materialize in 21 sometime.
All right, so I feel good of the order?
Before we leave, I just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone.
Same to you.
I know it's been a difficult year for all of us personally and, you know, and, you know, helping run a government, but I appreciate our staff, I appreciate my fellow commissioners and, and everyone else that, that make us look good. And Pat, it, it was good serving with you the last eight years.